Welcome everyone to the Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting of September the 7th, 2021 at approximately 5:00 PM. Due to the number of people in attendance this evening, we are going to go into recess and reconvene in approximately 15 minutes at the Swan County Coliseum. At this time, we are going to continue our meeting out of recess. It's approximately 5:21 PM. If everyone will please stand, we're going to have our invocation or our pledge by Commissioner Fleming.
Before I, before I go ahead further, we want to recognize our dead secretary, not with us tonight, he had surgery, my understanding, and we wanted to remember him and I pray. Let's pray. Father, we come this afternoon with, I'm a hearts, by head, some heavy hearts, and Father, we come because we know that everything will make a way out of nowhere. Father, so we're going to realize, we're going to trust and believe in you tonight that everything's going to be alright. We know we do all things and do it in your will, we know that you'll make a way out of nowhere. So Father, we actually have mercy. We pray that you look over this family tonight, must go family, give them strength, give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding, and we ask that you will restore. Let's save a heart tonight in this building. Let us leave here with an understanding and to do what's right and do our sake. Father, we didn't come to say a whole lot of beautiful words, but we just want to say thank you. And we pray that you be with us in these times. Watch over, protect this county. Look on these commissioners tonight, look on staff tonight, have mercy. Bless us with the blessings that we stand here today. Father, we ask these and all blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We still have some commissioners. Before we start, I'd like to make sure you pull your microphones need to be right up to you where the folks can hear us. Before we get started this evening, what I'd like to do is introduce our commissioners.
Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Try that. Test, test. Better? Alright, we'll start this again. It will be a little difficult here, I will say that. We've had meetings here in the past. It's the room, the way it echoes, the sound just doesn't carry like it should. But anyway, I want to welcome everyone. To start with, many people here does not know all of us or any of us, but I want to introduce myself. I'm Lynn Stapleton, I'm the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. We're going to start to our left with Mr. Franklin White.
Glad everybody could come. It's great to see so many people here taking interest in their county. Glad to have you, appreciate you coming. I would just ask that everybody keep a civil tone. I know you're passionate about this, but if we can just talk to people like adults, I think we'll all be better off. But I'm your commissioner for District 5. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleming.
Okay, I'm Commissioner Clyde Fleming, District 2. I want to voice the same thing. I've been on this board for 11 years. Okay, can you hear me now? My name is Clyde Fleming. I'm your District 2 Commissioner. I've been on this board for 11 years and I've seen some hard times here, but this is one that my condolences, my heart go out to the individuals here, glad that you're here to know what's going on and have interest in your county, dealings and everything. Maybe we can come up with an answer tonight. I know you got to be concerned because I'm concerned, but as I said in my prayer, we trust that God will work everything out tonight, and I know that he can, I know he will. He's been doing it and I know he will continue to do it, and I know we're not in a service, but I'm just saying that we're going to trust in God tonight that everything will work out alright. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleming. To my far right, Commissioner Land.
I'm Travis Land, I'm Commissioner, District 3. I just echo what these folks say, and I mean, we're all in this together. No one likes increases, especially ourselves, and we spend a lot of time and work on trying to do the best that we can, and hopefully you guys will see that tonight.
Next, Commissioner Hale.
Commissioner Don Hale, District 1, Vice Chairman. Like everyone said, I'm glad to see everyone here, a lot of familiar faces, some I haven't seen before, but I found an opportunity to speak to you before the meeting, and I'm just glad you're here. I'm glad you're here on behalf of your families and your county, and like every commissioner said, we've worked hard at this, we're still working hard at it, you guys are hopefully going to learn a little bit about that tonight, and I hope we learn more tonight, because every meeting it seems to have educated us even more. I do agree with everyone, if we can just all, I know it's very easy to get upset about these things, believe me, we all do, but if we can just work through it and just be people and respect one another, I think we'll get more out of it, guys. So, thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. We're going to continue to make adjustments the best we can for the microphones, ma'am, and you may want to move down this way, it may be better for you. I know you're a long ways from us, so I don't know. At this time, I'm going to move into our first item of business, this is approval of minutes from our August 4th, our August 5th, our August 13th, August 17th, August 19th, and August 26th meetings. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving ahead to our consent agenda, we have items 2 through 11. Do I have any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Stapleton, can we pull, Mr. Chairman, can we pull number 6 and number 8 for discussion, please, sir?
We're going to pull item number 6 and number 8 for discussion. At this time, I have items 2 through 5, 7, and 9, 10, and 11. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Land?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Alright, Commissioner Land, comments on item number 6?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I just had a couple of questions for Mr. Harris. There wasn't any backup information on this particular agenda item. Why are we rescinding to surplus this particular parcel?
This is a three acre parcel in Wellburn. You may have noticed, we've been using it as a staging area with materials out there, and for that reason, we decided that it would be better if we keep it. What happens is they shoulder crews and the right away crew when they're out digging on projects in those areas, rather than drive all the way back to the yard with that material, they dump it out there until they have a sufficient pile of it, and then we send all the dump trucks out, pick it up, bring it back to the yard.
Okay, I'm good with that. Do you know how many parcels currently that we have on the market? On the market?
No, I don't.
Okay. Alright.
I don't. In fact, we will need to discuss that more, because I gave y'all a packet on some information recently, and at some point, maybe not tonight, we'll need to talk about that again.
Yeah, I'd just like to approach to get the ball moving on getting some of that happening.
Right.
Please, sir. I'm good with that, Mr. Chairman.
Let's go ahead, and at this time, do I have a motion to approve item number 6?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Land?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you think if we turn those speakers the other way?
We could do it, there's Mr. Scott right here. Shannon, could you come here and turn one of these speakers around, and we'll see if it helps folks a little bit? While I'm talking, does that help many? Okay. Go ahead and turn the other one around, let's see if we can, as long as we can kind of hear ourself. I think, that help? Well, it helps that I talk loud, though. The rest of these gentlemen are quiet. Okay, good. Well, thank you, we're all learning together right here. Just be patient with us. We want to get through this. We had, I had approved on item number 6, is that correct? Is that where I left off? Item number 8, Commissioner Land.
Yes, sir, I just had a couple of questions on this. Again, there wasn't a whole lot of backup information.
Right up to the mic, please, sir. Just like you're singing, you got to touch it.
I'm not used to singing. You baffled me.
Could you tell us what the items are and get into them, because otherwise we have no idea.
I'll read it.
Ma'am?
I'll read it, ma'am, sir. I'll read it.
Okay, yes, he's going to read it.
I'll read item number 8. It says, "Approval of Task Order with Locklear and Associates in the amount of 2,000 for work associated with the mine permit renewal. Budget impact paid from Road Department Professional Services line." Mr. Harris? Is this something that we renew annually, quarterly, every 10 years?
This permit is actually currently in the name of the owner of the property, but in our contract, it says, in fact, there's a copy in there, that we're responsible for securing the permitting. A few years ago, that was changed over into the owner's name, but we still have the responsibility for it being renewed. This is just the cost of all the paperwork to get the thing renewed. I don't know how frequently it has to be renewed, I'd have to go back and look at the actual permit.
Okay. Do you know the current status of that mine? I mean, our current status of our permit?
The permit is expired.
It is? But it's in the land owner's?
It's in the owner's name.
Okay. Alright, I'm good.
At this time, do I have a motion to approve item number 8?
Second.
Commissioner White? Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I will move to item number 12. It says, "At 5:05 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to discuss with possible board action, adoption of final rate resolution for fire protection assessment for fiscal year 2021 and '22." At this time, we'll have to open a public hearing. I will turn it over to Mr. Pravat.
Alright, folks, if there's, everybody that's out here right now, if you think that you're going to speak on this particular matter, would you stand so that we can all be sworn as a group?
It's for anybody, you can stand even if you think you might speak and you don't speak, it's just, we're...
Is this for fire or is it for any?
This is for fire.
Just for fire?
Just fire, yes, sir.
Just fire. Alright, will each of you raise your right hand? Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God? Alright, now, as you each approach the microphone a little bit later on, please state your name and address clearly for the record as we move through, okay? Alright, thank you very much.
At this time, we'll move ahead to Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed rates for residential assessment is $120 per dwelling unit. The non-residential proposed rate is 12 cents per square foot, and on land, up to 160 acres would be $23.37, and more than 160 acres would be 22 cents per acre. Those are your proposed rates.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Harris from the board, or any comments in general from the board? At this time, I will open a Florida public comment. If I have someone wishing to speak about the fire assessment, if you please make your way to the podium. Thank you, sir, and welcome. Just your name and address for the record.
My name, my name is Paul Haas. My address is 18862, 105th Road in McAlpin, Florida, District 5.
Yes, sir, you're fine, go ahead.
As far as the rates in fire assessment, I've got over 36 years in the fire service. Better portion of it was spent here in Swan County. I currently own All Fire Solutions, which is a fire cause and origin and fire service consulting firm. Matter of fact, I just got through testifying in federal court on behalf of a large county where Mickey Mouse is at, on fire. Starting with the vacant land or agricultural land, I believe that any tax or assessment on it is unconstitutional, because we are paying the State of Florida, Division of Forestry, a fee or a tax for that to be protected, and the proposed amount's outrageous. As far as the homes, the $100 that we currently have is sufficient. Our fire department is bloated. We are overstaffed, have too much equipment, and we have grandiose dreams that will never face the reality of what we have here in Swan County. We have more battalion chiefs than Walton County or Pensacola. Pensacola's ISO 1. It is time that yous ask your fire department to tighten their belt, instead of asking your citizens, which are your boss, to tighten their belts and come up with the money to pay for grandiose schemes. Furthermore, we, we're in the environment right now where our economy's not getting any better. So we have, we, we're in bad shape. We can't afford to pay it, and it's outrageous. The EMS transports that Swan County's doing, non-emergency, they took business away from a private company, Century Analytics. You have four other companies which are interested in doing it, Gwense AMR, American Emergency Response. And, you know, why are we doing that? Why are we spending money on three to four times the personnel that we need? And I'll leave it at that. I have a bunch of figures, but it's beyond my time to do it, but I'm going to tell you, don't ask us to tighten our belts, you tighten your belts.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Keith Flynn.
You just have to get real close to the microphone.
Address is 12838, 155th Place, Live Oak, 32060. You know, I've been, I was a banker for 20 years, and the things that I've seen in this budget and the things that the process have come, if it would have landed on my desk, people would have been fired. I've noticed that the county wants to spend a million dollars in the CARES money to build a hangar out at the airport that nobody uses, but I also know that you guys want to spend about a million dollars to build a fire station right north of the railroad tracks that's perfectly, perfectly fine and functioning for our county. I don't see the need, just like this gentleman said over here, building that, that fire station is insane. It's bloating our budgets even more. And I'd really like to know, you know, you found the CARES Act money for an airport hangar. Did you guys know that there's CARES Act money for a fire station? Yes, no?
We have state fund. Okay, Commissioner Hale?
If you're speaking about the money we're spending on the fire station north of town, that was grant money that we received.
Okay, okay, but still, you know, do we need another fire station? It's going to require more people? Just like the gentleman said here, now, we're overstaffed, I mean, you're asking us to tighten our belts. Do you realize that if you pass this rate increase, almost half the people in this home, in this, in this arena, are going to lose their homes? People already are having hard times trying to make ends meet, trying to feed their families, and now you want to double the tax rates? This is insane. And one other question, too. Is there a budget meeting going to be held on Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everybody, you got to make sure to be at the budget meeting on Thursday so that you can address item for item, what they're trying to spend, so. That's all I have to say, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dean Smehoe, just a local resident, and...
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Dean Smehoe, S-M-E-H-I-H-O, 16125, 40th Street, Live Oak.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm a retiree, my wife is a retiree. We've been in the area for a little over five years, although my family's been here for, going on 30 years. But the thing is, is we're all on a fixed income, and to see that your maximum assessment could be over 300% really affects the way that we can live, and I'm sure that most of the people in Live Oak are retirees and are on fixed budgets. So the addition of, you know, the 120 increase or the $20 increase for this next year's not bad, even though it's higher than the CPI that we have at the moment, but to go up to almost 300% is just outrageous, and I think you guys are a little bit out of your minds to try to go that high. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just so, just so I'm clear, we're just speaking on fire right now. We're going to revisit public comment on the garbage assessment, just so everyone can touch it.
This is about fire?
Yes, sir, welcome. Name and address for the record.
Ruben Ortiz, 15221, 173rd Street.
Welcome, sir.
A great city of Alpen. Looking at your proposed, proposed budget, it seems that you project to collect $2,722 and $142, 722 and $142. That sounds like a good deal of money that you plan to, to, to collect, and you're collecting that money from most of all that are retirees, fixed income, in the worst possible time, because have you considered the impact of COVID? Have you considered unemployment rate here in Swan County? But looking, looking at the fire department, if what I read online is correct, maybe, maybe incorrect, but it seems that you have, the fire department has 12 members, I don't know if that is correct, three fire stations, and I wonder how much it costs to operate the fire department? How much did we pay last year? Was it close to $2 billion that we paid to operate the fire department? I wonder.
Mr. Harris, can you, did you understand what the question he was asking?
I don't have my budget book with me. I've got, I've got the information. This is an assessment discussion tonight. The budget meeting will actually be on Thursday, so I don't have the budget with me tonight. But is Eddie here?
Chief Hand.
He may know what that number was. You're saying you want the number for the current year?
Yes, sir. How much did we, how much did we pay last year? How much, because here we have what is projected to be collected.
If you'll step aside for a minute, Chief Hand may be able to answer the question for us. The difference between, do you know what the difference is between the current budget and the proposed budget for fire for next year? The dollar amount?
How much, my question is how much it costs to run the fire department with its
three stations and about 12 members, if this is correct? How much did we pay for that last year? Was it close to $2 billion?
Give me just one second, let me grab my book. You got it right there? I've got it, I've got my book.
Sir, can we get that information for you in a few minutes? Chief Hand, get that, or we can move ahead.
Just to answer some of the things that he has, and we have five stations that are currently career stations, and we have roughly seven or eight reserve stations that are out there. Fires, the fireside budget was just shy of $3 million last year, and the budget itself is, and I have the proposed budget in my book, I can give you an exact figure, but the budget did not change very much this year. It's only increased just a little bit on the fireside. Our major increase is, you know, we have, we have two budgets. We have an EMS budget that's funded out in general, and we have a fire budget that's funded out of, out of the fire assessment. If you want me to, I can get the budget figures and give you exact figures, or I can...
If you'll just take me by there, we can give him that number, and I'll let the next person speak.
One last question, if I could. Did we operate in deficit this year? And if it was deficit, how much was that deficit?
Okay. Chief Hand, if you'll help him in the background.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, have anyone else wishing to speak on the fire? Welcome. Just your name and address for the record.
Celia Graham, 10099, 81st Road, Live Oak, Florida.
Welcome.
Thank you. My question is, you know, I don't know all these ins and outs of, you know, figures and everything else, but I know, you know, I'm retired, okay? I pay $1,600 a year for fire insurance. What's that for? You know what I'm saying? And we have heard, and this was one of my questions, it's not necessarily fire, but we have heard that the five commissioners are the ones that is going to decide on this. Why can't we put it to a vote before the people to decide on it? Because, you know, and they wouldn't insure me because I was 5.1 or 2 tenths of a mile from Live Oak Fire Department. You know, I had a hard time getting fire insurance on my home, and if anybody doesn't have fire insurance and their home burns down, you ain't going to help them rebuild it?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, what's the point? And why? My question basically is why can't the people decide and vote on this?
Mr. Pravat, you have any comment on that?
Dearest, pursuant to statute, y'all are the ones that are going to be...
Close to your microphone, sir, please.
Excuse me, pursuant to statute, that's part of y'all's responsibility, you know, to be voting on all of the assessments across the board. Any of the assessments, there's not a provision constitutionally to have and take it to vote before the citizenry.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much. I have any, anyone else? Welcome, sir. Just your name and address for the record.
Marty Humphries, 7932, 240th Street, O'Brien, Florida. The 100, I understand the cost of business goes up, so I'm, I'm okay with that, but in the, both of these, the land and the fire, you show it going up 20%, I think, on the fire, but then you have a sentence that says you can go up to basically three times that without having another meeting with us. I got a little problem with no future meeting to discuss this issue in the future. So mine, I think it was 120, but then I got a sentence here that says, y'all can just up it in the future without even having a meeting, to $330. I don't think that's right. I think you should have a public... I think you should have a public meeting. I mean, you shouldn't put a sentence in there saying we can do it in the future without any kind of meeting.
My understanding, sir, is whatever the decision was tonight as we moved forward, if it was that twenty dollars, you would not have another price increase without a meeting such as this.
You, you know what it says? It says protection assessment fee that can be imposed without further meeting is three hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's what it said, and probably everybody said.
Can I let this gentleman speak to that?
Yeah, just one.
So I'm Jeff Rackley with GSG, and we did the fire solid waste assessment studies. But the, the point of that isn't that you can increase it without future meeting, it's without further notice. And that was done to save actually the county taxpayers' money so that in future years, they don't have to pay to send notices to everyone again. There will be... So there, there will be meetings that you will have to go through the, through the whole same process. There just won't be a mailing to each and every property owner in future years. You could include it on the trim notice if you elected to. You will have at least two meetings to, to discuss this, just like you've had this.
Listen, this, this sentence just sounded like you didn't have to have another meeting. If you have another meeting, I think it's okay. But it, but that is a concern when you read it, it sounds like they...
Mr. Provant, am I clear that we have to have a meeting if we had any adjustment after the fact?
Yes, sir. I mean, each year you'll still annually have to have that. Pursuant to the study that, that they had done before, to each year, instead of sending out one of these mailings, not the mailing that you normally get, but one of the additional notice mailings, which saves about seventeen thousand dollars per mailing. So that what they're letting you know, that the study that they have done shows that is the maximum that would currently cover all of those particular costs. That's just letting you know that. So that each year they don't have to send out that additional notice telling you the same number again as you move forward. But each year you will continue to have a, a meeting just like this one to be able to set whatever the fire assessment is and whatever the solid waste assessment will be.
So would we get a notice in the future?
You'll get the published notice like you would in the paper or on the website or that type of thing.
Guys, I, I understand, I'm just saying, I, my comment is we need to be notified if you're gonna increase it up to three, three times what it is. Not, not in the paper, in the little published thing. You know, we, as a landowner, should be notified. Not a little published teeny thing you can barely read in the paper. That's just my comment. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cameron?
Tony Cameron, 11212177 Road, Live Oak, Florida. A lot has been said, and to waste your time for me to say it over and over is a waste of my time and yours. But I'm not an attorney, but I do beg to differ with our county attorney. When, when I, I can read, and it does say that you can increase without sending out a notice again. And I don't think that's what the county wants. I think the people of the county, the voters of the county, want you to come back to us if you have to have an increase. Because there are many people, I, I can pay, I can pay them. But I look around and I have friends and I have relatives and I look around, and some of those folks are on fixed incomes, can't pay it, and they just are gonna have to live with it. Well, that's not the way we should operate. And, you know, when I look at it, I see fire trucks. I don't know how much they cost, but hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of brand new fire trucks that are driving around our county, that they're at the restaurant when I go by the restaurant. They could stay at the, at their shop and they could cook, because they have stoves at all of them. And they could fix their own food there, wouldn't have to drive that multi, those multi-million dollar vehicles all over this county. They could stay in there and they wouldn't have to burn the fuel, they wouldn't have to have to wear and tear them. There are ways to cook without cutting personnel, without hurting anybody. But there's ways that they can cut the fire budget. The fire budget does not need to be increased. And that's what this is about, the twenty extra dollars, is to increase the fire budget. And like he said, it could go up three hundred percent. And I think that's something that you, as our representatives, need to look at real strong before you vote to do those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Welcome, sir.
Allen Nozier, 10807 217th Road. My complaint is I went down to the fire station there in Darling Park to find out some information. I kept going back and going back and going back. Finally, I went back at about seven o'clock at night, and there were two firemen there on duty. And I was talking to one of them, and I said, where's the rest of ya? He said, just the two of us. I said, what do you mean, just the two of us? He said, well, we have to go on a fire, we take the fire truck. We have to go on somebody getting hurt, we take the ambulance. Now I'm thinking, I'm at home burning, and here they are out on the ambulance. Or maybe I'm in a car wreck and they're out putting out the fire. Now that don't make sense. You want all this money, yet there's only two people on duty at the time. So what do you choose? The guy burning to death or the one in the car wreck?
I, I appreciate your statements.
That's it?
Before you, before you step away, Mr. Chairman, if I can, I, I know this gentleman, known him a long time, he's a great guy. Uh, I think that is some of what this twenty dollar increase is. I don't wanna speak for Eddie Hand and his department, but I know what us board members have been told is the twenty dollar increase, he's wanting to go to more men per station, that's something he wants to work towards, maybe four. Uh, some of the others is obviously where, you know, the state of Florida voted on raising the minimum wage to fifteen dollars. He's already working in that direction as well. And it's good, well, not, I don't think their start pay does, but, uh, with some of their overtime. But anyhow, I don't wanna get in his business without him speaking for his department. But that, that's something they have were taught about was going to a four-man station. Yes, sir.
They, they need to cover up on it because they're leaving a big gap out there.
Yes, sir.
Miss, thank you for your comments, sir. I would like to speak. I would like to speak back to Mr. Cameron's comments previously. I do feel like the letter that went out gave information that I don't really know the word I'm looking for, but it's to the effect of where it can go up, not realizing that we have to have a meeting. I understand that part. I would say this, if it's the pleasure of the public, I can ask Mr. Provant, and if I, I don't see why this board couldn't vote on it if we so choose that if that's what the public wants, if they want us to send a letter out if there's gonna be an increase, is that, can we do that? Can we make the decision to do that moving forward?
Yes, sir, you can. Uh, it's just a different statutory notice than what they're, they're, they're talking about. And that's what the additional cost, you know, is for each year. And I, I wasn't there for the whole budget hearing, but there was something in the neighborhood of fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars to, to do that.
I understand that, but...
Y'all's prerogative.
But I understand their side too, that if, if something's going up, they wanna get something in the mailbox that tells them something's going up. I can understand that.
Yes, sir.
And I don't have a problem if it's fifteen thousand or fifty thousand, if that's what the public wants. I don't have a problem giving, acknowledging that. So, gentlemen, we can do that on fire and garbage? Solid waste, I'm sorry, for the...
Does that have to be two separate notices, or can it be one?
Sir, did you wanna speak?
Joseph Carroll, 904 Pine Avenue Southwest, in Live Oak. A week from this past Sunday, my family personally, my wife, had a medical emergency, and she had an anorexia. All right? She's up there in, in, in the stands with us from today. I wanna personally congr, um, stand up for the fire department and, and let y'all know straight up. We have great firefighters and paramedics, and by God, I appreciate them. To sit there, it is real easy, and this is what irritates me living, you know what, out of me. It is real easy to stand here, throw knives at y'all, and complain about cost this and cost that and everything. A typical fire pumper, a small pumper, is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. Yes, cheap hand can buy a used one. But it's used, it's like a used car, it's gonna be broken, and it's gonna, someone else is getting rid of their trash. And now you're gonna buy trashed vehicles. Fire departments are not equal. I have personally known fire departments, and I have, I, and y'all need to understand something. I did thirty-two years in the federal government as a firefighter, I retired as a firefighter. I was standing here in front of everyone, and I have been on the rig, I have known those calls, I've had lightning strikes right around me, I've seen a patient where the skull was split wide open. I have been in the trenches. It is easy to complain. But when a fire engine, a cheap engine is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's just the truck. You're not talking all the fire equipment, the axes, the hose, all the halogen bars and everything else that goes in. The, the bunker gear the firefighters gotta wear, the, the training. And let's talk about training. That training the fire department goes on is endless. The same with our law enforcement brothers and sisters. That training is monthly. It doesn't happen by free. We got professional firefighters, real professional firefighters. I don't know what the cost is to be a paramedic, but that's a year of dedicated service to, to get yourself through that school. That book, by the way, is that thick. They have to learn, and that's just a paramedic book, then there's the medical book that they have to memorize.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank y'all, and I do sincerely appreciate it, and I know y'all have some tough decisions.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Stacy Brogman, I live at 87371st Road. And I have five acres with a one-dwelling unit, accessory building, and an in-law apartment. And they're trying to charge me for three dwelling units. I already paid thirty-nine hundred dollars a year taxes, which keep going up every year. And now they wanna charge me another thousand dollars for, um, fire and another thousand for salt waste. That's six thousand dollars a year, and I'm, I'm, I'm one person with a minimum wage.
Well, are you saying that's the, the amount that it can, that the most it can be? Are you saying that's what it's gonna be this year?
Well, I, I don't...
Or is it just unclear?
It's unclear, but as far as I know, they wanna charge me another thousand dollars, you know, for three dwelling units. I have one unit. One, they wouldn't even let me put another dwelling unit on five acres.
Mr. Campbell, would you be willing to speak with this young lady? And just try to help explain that to her in the back right there, and I'll let this lady speak.
My name is Rita Haynes, I live at 10472 153rd Road, Live Oak, Florida, 32060. Um, and addressing some of the things that have been said. We do not want y'all to spend more of our money to send us a notice. We would like for, have our notice earlier in the year. If y'all can work through the summer and get us something so that we can come to a meeting like this. It doesn't have to be special. Y'all put that flyer in with our other notice. But the increase would have to be a mil more just to do the mailing. Um, twenty percent is a good bit. I have family and other people that have situations where our county is poor. We have a home, a family home, twenty acres, that has five family dwellings, but only two of them are occupied because the young people left this county to go make a living. The two of us that live there, we're supposed to pay the taxes and pay for trash and pay for, um, fire for places that are not even being occupied? There's multiple places in Swan County that have the same situation because our young people go away to college and they don't come back. We need to do some things to build some infrastructure to have our young people stay and the next generation stay here. But how can they afford it when our wages are low and our taxes are obviously getting higher? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Chairman, what, um, what she was referring to is what we've seen many, many cases of since these letters went out. It's showing that she has more than one dwelling on the property. This letter in particular says three. Um, what I can tell you is most of the people that have come in, what is in our records has not been reflected with what's on here. If they have one dwelling and they comes in with two, it's usually one that's in our system. We have to then go across the hall, verify that with the tax collector. Now, there's different things in your ordinance for the fire and garbage that allows for anything that somebody is living in to be picked up on the tax roll. And I think that's where you're running into some of this, is, um, people are turning sheds or campers into dwellings. But I have run into piles of it where it's just wrong. And we've been going out and verifying that there is only one dwelling on there. And we have been, you know, just letting them know that our records have one, uh, tax collector's records have one, the letter's wrong, your tax bill's gonna reflect one dwelling. Uh, there's nothing I can do about what came out on the letter. All I can say, if you've got something on this letter that you do not think is accurate, come by the office, recall, we'll verify it, I'll go across the hall and verify it with tax collector, and we'll let you know what the tax records are gonna, or the tax bill's gonna show. But the biggest thing that we've had so far, people coming in, has been just a misprint on the letter. And I don't mean one or two, we're talking two, three hundred that have been off. And then there have been some that are like one of these other gentlemen spoke to, um, or I think the ma'am spoke to, um, vacant homes. A vacant home does not come off of the tax roll because it's vacant. It has to be inhabitable, meaning that you have converted it to storage and no one else can, no one can live in it for it to come off of the roll. So if you do have one that is vacant, and you want to cut the power from it or cut the water from it, it can be converted to extra features and taken off the roll. But until that, as long as it's habitable, we cannot take it off the roll. That's not our rule, that's, that's statute.
Is it water and power, Mr. Campbell?
Or.
Or, either or?
Yeah. You got some people that have an old house out there on a farm. They'll keep the power hooked up to it because maybe they had to run in the water to their livestock from the well. Um, they'll just go ahead and disconnect the water from the house. And then some of them are in just such bad condition that, um, they're, they're inhabitable without disconnecting the power to water, rotten floors. But if you haven't contacted the office in regards to that, feel free to. We've had four or five hundred people come in over the last week and a half in regards to these letters. And majority of them have been wrong, and there's been some that weren't, and we corrected it, um, with the tax collector. But, I mean, that's really all I can offer you on that. I will say, though, one of the problems that we do see, and I see it gonna be a... one of the problems that we do see, and I see it going to be a problem for y'all, is that under the ordinance that was passed way back before y'all's time, a camper trailer sitting on a five-acre homestead can be picked up if it's hooked to water and power. Just me personally, I don't think it needs to be that way. Because I know many a people that have a camper sitting under a pole barn, they keep it hooked to water and power just so they can keep it climate controlled and clean it when they come back. But that needs to be looked at, just in my humble opinion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gamble, thank you. Commissioner Flutman had a question.
I have a question I want to ask you. What if an individual come to your office and find out that the county has been charging them three, four years? Would they get any reimbursement?
Okay, if somebody comes in and has a mathematical error or there's something that they were being charged for that they don't have on their property. Like, say you had a dwelling tore down and for whatever reason it never came off the fire or the garbage roll. You can go back three years. That's by statute.
Only three years?
Only three years. That's where the statute reads. We hope that gentleman, if you don't mind pointing out, that you said- we got him a three-year reimbursement back on his.
Statute actually says four, and then one with the other three.
Well, it's counting the current year plus three, that gives you your four. Current year plus three gives you the four years.
Thank you.
Now, if it's a difference of an opinion, let's just say Mr. Jenkins was there for forty-eight years and he had your house valued at a certain amount. I come in and your value goes down and you say, well, it should have been that all along. You can't go back on that. It has to be a mathematical mistake. And one more thing I want to add. The gentleman mentioned that this notice can go on the trim notice. It can't. It probably legally could, but I'm not going to allow it to. And I've already talked with our attorney about that, so I don't even want to go down that road, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gamble, please. If you don't mind, just, I know what you said about the campers, I know me and you have worked on that. Just to be clear, you're not, just so public knows, you're not talking about just a vacant five-acre lot with a camper on it, someone living in it? We're talking about someone that owns a house and a camper.
Under the ordinance that the board has, if somebody's got a river lot and they pull a vacant land permit, I mean, a recreational use permit for that river lot to put a camper on it, they got a well, something, power pole, then they get, then they'll pay the fire and garbage on that. I'm talking about at your house, your homestead property.
Right.
You know, if you got a camper hooked up, my camper, which I sold it, but I had it hooked up to power and water so I could clean it, keep it climate controlled, and my kids like to go out there on the weekends and camp in it. That can, under this ordinance, be picked up. And what we're finding is some of these extra dwellings that are popping up on these letters, that's what it is, campers. And Ms. Sharon's been sending the, um, Harfield got back out there to verify it and take them off the roll if nobody's living on them. But that's where some of that's coming from. And I don't know the answers to addressing it, that'd be up to y'all, but I have talked with one of Ms. Sharon's employees, Ms. Amanda, that does the fire roll. And me and her both recognize that as being a problem. Anything else?
Yeah. Mr. Gamble, information in that letter, where did that come from?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure. What I was told from one of y'all's employees is that they pulled the information from our tax roll, from Ms. Jordan's tax roll, merged them together, and then pulled some of the information off of last year's tax bills. I don't know, you'd have to ask the people from GSG where they gathered from. I just know that they were pretty short on the amount of dwellings because I believe y'all based it on fifteen thousand five hundred, and they're about eleven hundred short. Which also has a budget impact of making the assessment a little higher or rather a little lower for everybody.
So you're saying how many off of the fifteen five that they figured the study on?
I think sixteen six eighty-five.
Yeah, that's how many is currently on the fire and garbage roll right now. And I think the the study was about around fifteen thousand five hundred, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
So you're about eleven hundred short.
Of which number?
The ones y'all get the study in.
The fifteen five?
Yeah.
Are we sure about that?
I know what's on the tax roll, that's fifteen thousand, or sixteen thousand six hundred or something.
Is what you have on the tax roll?
That's what I have, Ms. Jordan has it on her tax roll. The fire and garbage roll was housed and prepared in the tax collector's office. The only role that we build in the property appraiser's office is the property, real property and tangible property, which is land, houses, equipment. So I can't remember the exact numbers, it sounded like you had-
Sixteen thousand six eighty-five is, was a fairly new, I mean, that number changes a little bit. They find some myth, take some off, but we could go sixteen, sixteen thousand six hundred eighty-five residential units in the county.
But you're saying eleven hundred off of that?
Eleven hundred's what they based this study on, off of that. Fifteen thousand five hundred's what this was based on. I don't know what they got at fifteen thousand five hundred.
Trying to get to what the real number is.
Sixteen thousand six-
They're going to bill sixteen thousand six hundred or something, houses.
But y'all are going to go out and address all these concerns, I'm assuming?
Well, those, that was with about two hundred already coming off of the roll.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just trying to get to-
No, no, I understand, but I'm just saying that number there, the last I heard, had included everything that has come off the roll so far. So.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble, for your comments.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, sir? Either one, you're fine. I'll take both of them. Name and address for the record.
Jennifer Brown, one six five eight six seventy-sixth Street, Live Oak, Florida, three two zero six zero, commonly known as Mitchell Road. Now, I live on the western side of the county. I have seventy-six acres, I have cows, and I have tigers. And I have a brand-new piece of crap house. Mobile home company, that's all I need to say. But anyway, long story short. Now, I love our firemen, they're great. They're good, our boys in blue, I back every one of them. However, when our property caught fire or we had an issue, the response time can be thirty to forty-five minutes, if I'm lucky. Now, for years, I was not privileged to have enough money to pay for fire insurance. So, what you think's going to happen to a house in thirty to forty-five minutes? It's toast, it's gone. You're homeless. All right? Now, you guys wanting to add? Take more money out? Now, I'm paying a ton in taxes. I'm also on a fixed income. A very tight income, I might add. My husband is a owner-operator in trucking. Now, something I want to bring to y'all's attention. In order to improve some response times, you guys need to start maintaining roads. Have you ever ridden in a big truck, a fire truck, an ambulance at speed trying to get to somebody's house? Those guys are beating their asses to death. And they cannot get there at speed. A cop car can. But I can tell you, a semi with airbags, even if it's spring ride, which is really old technology, by the way, but it's still in use. It's tearing up the equipment, it's beating the guys to death, it's reducing response time. You want to do something? Put it into the infrastructure. Help the people out by fixing the damn roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir. Just name and address for the record.
My name's Michael Clary. Two two four seven zero, U S one twenty-nine, O'Brien, Florida. And again, as she just said, I'm a hundred percent behind our first responders. But as far as this fire thing, you've got to realize the past year and a half, we just coming off of. I'm a self-employed person and my phone has not been ringing because nobody's got no money, because nobody's been working. I mean, you folks have a salary, good for you, I'm happy for you. A lot of us do not right now. So you have to take that into consideration. Otherwise, you guys are going to be paying the taxes here in this county for yourself. You know, I mean, it's just, there's a firehouse, there's two firehouses within ten minutes of my house, both of them shut down. Rather than going and building fire departments, what's wrong with opening and reusing the ones that were there? Within ten minutes, two of them completely shut down. Get them, get personnel in there, do what needs to be done to the building, and make use out of it. We don't need to spend all this money. A lot of people don't have this money. And the way, the writing in your letter is what really provoked me that I'm going to get I'm going to lose the title to my property if I can't pay this tax. Well, that's a crock. I pay my taxes. Okay? So it's, I mean, the way you guys are proposing it to us is not right. And again, I'm not the only one that's not working. I haven't worked in a year. So. That's all I got.
Yes, sir.
Larry Sessions, forty-three seventy-seven Seventy-second Street, Live Oak, Florida. I do want to echo that all the firemen are good people, great people, all the EMS people are. I'm not here to talk about those kinds of things. The real thing that I've always looked at is the numbers. And my biggest concern is we don't have line items in the budget to be able to figure out the difference between fire, EMS, and non-emergency transport. So when you throw it all together in a budget, you don't know what part of the business is really bringing in money and what part is losing money. I really have a feeling that there's one-third of it that's losing money and we're spending a lot of money on it. So if we could have a line item for each of these three things, I mean, I came to a meeting two, three meetings ago and I said, we have to split it up so we can see what parts are working. We had forty-seven fire calls last year. Look at your forty-seven fire calls and look at what you spent on fire. Look at how many people got picked up by ambulance for emergency purposes. Figure out the miles and the time and what went into that. And then you look at the people that you pick up for non-emergency transport and figure that out. And when you throw it all together and divide it up, you'll see the problem, like in any business. If you've got something that's not working, you quit doing it. And you always put your money towards something that's successful, that's actually bringing quality. Quality, you know, just bringing quality to the county. But if you've got something that's not bringing quality to the county, I think you need to stop it. So just looking at, listening to all these different things tonight, I think too, Mr. Jimmy, isn't there a way that if enough people sign a petition that they're concerned enough to vote on something, that you could get a petition or y'all could vote on a petition to make a referendum to vote on things like this? If the board passes something like that, if you get so much interest and so many number, you know, whatever the number is on a petition, that the board can say, okay, we're going to turn this into referendum and vote on it. I think that'd make a lot of people happier too. But looking at the numbers, and if you divide up the department in three ways, you'll see where the money's being made and where the money's not being made. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Clary. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mark Trumble, one six four one three seventy-seventh Road, Live Oak. The first gentleman that was up spoke to the county's ISO rating. We haven't heard anything about what this assessment is going to do to the ISO rating. And the other woman that came up and spoke talked about response time. And a county that is as dispersed as Swanee County is, I would think, looking at the rest of the country, that a professional fire department is an extravagance, that there is no way to get a pumper to most of the places in the county to fight a fire that is not fully involved. And so by the time that our professional pensioned firefighters are getting to a fire, they're picking up pieces, they're putting out nothing, they're saving nothing. The lives are being saved, no property is being saved. The difference between what a professional firefighting force would do and a volunteer firefighting force would do is exactly the same. And so I think you have to justify not only what this increase is that you're proposing, but how can you justify the professional firefighting force in the first place? With our ISO numbers have got to be absolutely reprehensible, given that there are people in the county that cannot even get fire insurance. That's how poor our rating must be.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. You can tilt it down. There you go. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Harriet Wells. I'm at two two eight three nine Ninety-third Drive in O'Brien, Florida. Oh, you know the Florida part. I really didn't mean to speak to the fire issue. I believe twenty dollars is absolutely fair. My husband and I were very instrumental in raising money and building the fire station in O'Brien so that our ISO rating would be different and everything. And within a very short time, I don't know what's being done with it, but we did a lot of work, spent a lot of money, and then we gave it to the county. The problem I have with the assessment for fire is just on how the assessments are made. Like the other person said, I have, I inherited some property from my mom, it has old buildings on it. We don't have the money or the time to fix them, so they're not inhabitable. Some of them could be, some of them couldn't. The main fire issue with that one would be, we purchased some downtown O'Brien because we wanted to save those old buildings. The ones that are right across from the S and S, and we have a little store. And then a brick, a brick building that was built in the eighteen hundreds. I had a personal connection to it because my grandparents lived in it. So when we got the opportunity, we bought those buildings. We've redone some of them, we haven't had the money to do it. Up until a couple of years ago, they were not charging me for fire assessment on that building. Last year, because it doesn't have electric to it, it's completely brick, it stopped fires three times in O'Brien. Fires that burned everything to that building from both directions at various times. All of a sudden, a couple of years ago, they started charging two hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-two cents, which is more for, I have five residences, only one of which are being lived in. And then I had this building, like I said, that's the only one that I have a question about the fire except for if it's not a habitable building, and I will go and try to take care of that. But it's how the assessments are made that needs to be looked at as well as, because twenty dollars for a unit, you know, that's not a problem. But what has to be ensured or have fire protection? Because of how big this building is, it went from nothing to two hundred and eighty dollars and for next year it's supposed to be three hundred and fourteen. So, that's what I would like is for some of these where we do have properties that can't be lived in, but now we're paying, well, it was what, three hundred and twenty dollars per unit, even if nobody's living in it. And now it could be as much as three hundred dollars instead of a hundred and thirty for the salt waste.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll wait on that one, so. Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the fact of needing to have a clear way with the assessments. I guess now, because I tried to day for hours to find out what it is. It's twelve cents per square foot. And so that's a big old empty building that's not durable. It's costing, it'll be costing me three hundred and fourteen dollars on top of all the rest. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome, sir.
I wasn't going to make a statement, so I didn't take it out.
I wasn't gonna make a statement, so I didn't take it out.
Would you raise your hand if you swear affirm the testimony before the board to be the two itself you got?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address the board. I'm a original, I was born and raised in Swanee County. I've lived here all my life, except when I was in the Air Force. And my wife and I are on a budget that, it does not fluctuate. If something happens in our life, we have to make arrangements here. You know, Robert and Peter to pay Paul. At one time, we had five major surgeries in five years. But we're, and we had to tighten our belts to make those payments. If it hadn't been for the grace of God, I probably wouldn't be here today. But my, I have one simple question for you guys. And I appreciate every one of you, you know, putting up the, all the people coming up here. But my question is, where I tighten up, I brought Peter to pay Paul. Where are you guys? And outside of the, the solid waste, outside of the fire department, you know, because Swanee County, you guys want to just deal with those two items. So have you considered your salaries? Have you considered paying what you pay other people, you know, the employees? And I know everybody is, needs their, their money. I know, you know, we're living in tough times. The cost of living has gone up. Inflation has gone up. But where have you? And I'd like for each one of you to, to give you one instance that where you think you could tighten your belt as far as the county is concerned. And I'll start with you.
State the question again. Where, where can I tighten my, my belt? Person, person, the county's belt? You, far as? We hire you, we pay you.
He's saying, what, where do you see something in the county that you think we could do better and save money?
Well, I've said it time and time again, and, I mean, I've, I've talked to the chief. I'm in a hundred percent agreeance. We need to get out of the non-emergency transfer business. Private sector can do it. Bring them back, let them do it, not, don't subsidize that, that service with fire assessments. Amen.
I, I agree with Commissioner Land. We've talked about this over and over again. What can we do? And we, are you talking specifically to fire or just in general?
No, I'm talking in general.
So, you know, there's a, there's a-
This is one thought.
Yeah. There's a lot of, of things that I've questioned over the years, but you mentioned about salary employees and things like that. I mean, those county folks, they wanna raise every year as well, just like everyone else does. So it's, it's such a double-edged sword. I, I appreciate the question, but I mean, to give you one answer, that would be hard to do because there's probably multiple things that we've done and can continue to work on.
Mr. Chairman.
I would, I would say the biggest thing would be every time that we choose to add a division, whether it's a trucking division or whether it's adding personnel, I mean, we have to be very cautious in that because when you add personnel, and trust me, I want people to stay here and work in this county, but you're adding into a retirement and it, it gets really big really quick. And trust, I want people to be here and be able to work, but I think we have to be very cautious in that as we expand.
There's not a fair answer, but I would say this. If, if I was in your situation, which I'll be one day, that I'm not working, I'll be on the retiring end, but I, I have to stand behind these guys one-hundred percent. They, they do a great job. And sometimes we don't know or we don't understand the situation. This, this is a very large county. And I heard one gentleman say that about it was too, the staff was too heavy, overloaded. But I have a lot of friends, a lot of family that have been in situations and across the tracks, but you can't get a, a train when the train is coming. Or all that business out there towards Lowe's and Walmart. Fire rescue, can't get out there to them, them individuals. I think that, that's very difficult. And, and I think that's a disservice to this community not to have adequate stuff. I, I know that the county is very large, but the community, you know, the people, population is not very large.
But, but sometimes we have to bite the bullet. We have to do things that's not popular because it's the right thing to do. You know, Robert and Peter to pay Paul to get the job done. That's your, your guy's job is to get the job done.
Well, that's what I'm about. Get in the job.
Sir.
I agree with Mr. Land. I think we should be out of the transfer business. The biggest cost to the county is probably personnel. You'd have to, you can go hire and freeze. You can, you can lay people off. You can do what you need to do, but efficiency, I guess, would be what determines that. So that would be my answer for you.
I won't ask you guys because y'all aren't on the board. I appreciate you letting me say what I had to say.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
Have a young lady here. Welcome.
No, we're saying welcome.
Good afternoon, good evening. So my name is Taniqua Owens. I live at eight-eight-six-seven Hundred Thirty-Seventh Road, right? So I sat and I listened, and I listened, and I sat. And I just said to myself, "Just don't say nothing. Just don't say nothing." Then I thought about it, wait, it's my paycheck on the line for my taxes for my property. So you say twenty dollars, right? It's just like a Netflix bill, right? You pay your Netflix bill of six-ninety-nine, and then you add Hulu, and then you add something else. And after a while, all those little small charges start adding up, right? So now I'm out of not just twenty dollars, but you're gonna go up again, and then you're gonna go up again, and my paycheck is not changing. I'm a single parent of four kids, plus one. I maintain my household by myself, right? So you say, "Well, that's your problem." Yes, it is, but these taxes are also my problem. In order for me to keep my property, I have to pay my taxes. If I don't pay my taxes, I lose my property. In order for you to continue to keep the younger generation here, they have to be able to afford the place that they live. Live Oak already has nothing to give to anybody, right? So we're talking about money. You somehow find money all the time to make changes to Heritage Park. You find money all the time to add equipment to Solid Drive, right? You can't find money to build a fire department in a time like this where there is so much CARES money just being thrown away at people. Our Florida is paying ten thousand dollars of rental assistance, but the county of Swanee County can't find any CARES money to build a fire department? That's kinda sad. So I'm trying to figure out, the city, they're increasing rates too. So the city and the county can't merge together and figure out how to make the fire department thing work? If everybody's going up on everybody's money, where's the money going? I think you guys need to start talking to the city, or maybe y'all need to have a joint meeting and figure out how the both of you can figure out how to get money for the fire department issue. Because you're steadily putting it on us and nothing's happening anywhere else. That's all I have to say.
Ray Cato, six-to-four-hundred-twenty-ninth Road. I'm a city firefighter and to speak on the ISO and the merging, I know that the city has put a proposition of five miles out. We go out five miles and when we have a fire, y'all show up and help out. So I know that's, I don't know what the status of that is or if we can maybe get an update sometime. But I know with your ISO, the only way it's gonna get better is if you have water supply. And a few years ago, there was the idea to have the water fifteen-hundred gallon tank or whatever at the collection sites. A truck could pull up, get water, drive off, and as they drive off, the tank starts filling back up. You'll have to do a relay unless you have supply somehow with pipes and stuff. I know the infrastructure would be too demanding. But just having that extra fifteen-hundred gallons five miles out would help. And whenever we have the county, we don't have a lot of fires, but when we do, having the county show up and help us out, it's, uh, it's great. We have an ISO of three. I know that a lot of it's just paperwork, but that would help the residents that live five miles from the city and the other people that live further out. The water supply would help. We can get there, you know, just as fast or faster in some of the spots, but you need more departments in different areas. But we can all expect to have more increases because of the fifteen dollars an hour minimum wage. So you're gonna be paying fifteen dollars an hour to work at Burger King or to be a firefighter, unless you have a calling, you know, flipping burgers for fifteen dollars an hour is pretty good. So we, you know, we can all expect to pay a little bit more here on the taxes. A hundred-and-twenty is reasonable. I, like everybody, saw the three, four-hundred dollars or whatever, and I was like, "Well, that's a little bit much." But I understand and I think that was it. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask Mr., I don't know who should I ask, Mr. Harris or the, or the chief? Mr. Cato stated that the city sent the county a pending, say what you said again, a proposal to respond to resident or fire calls within five miles of the city limits?
Yep. We would, uh, we'd bring two guys in a truck, fifteen-hundred gallons, and, you know, get, get their support, help out, have some extra water. And then, you know, they would pick up, you know, whenever we had a fire in town. We don't have a lot of fires all the time, but I think the last time they did the numbers, it was, they had about seven, we had about seven for that four-month or six-month period. And so it would be a free cost to the county and everybody would just kinda help. With, I'm not talking about merging, just a-
You know, like an interlocal agreement type thing? Chief, as I saw, what's, what can we do to help the residents in the county that don't live inside the city limits?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that would help their ISO times if we had that agreement placed.
Myself taking over as chief, we did not have a very good working relationship with the city at all. After I took over, we, I have had conversations with Chief Croft about, we do have a mutual aid agreement with him. Anytime we need them, we can call them, they can call us. And we do respond to help them. They responded when we've called to help us. If we do an automatic aid agreement, it would be within five miles of their department. Would, they would be automatically paid to those, to those residents. Now, you gotta understand that a lot of the, of that five miles is also covered by our current station one that, you know, because of the close proximity of each other.
Yeah, and I-
But it's, you've got, to get the ISO rating below the nine that we currently have in the unincorporated areas outside of, um, the thou, you have to be within a thousand feet of, of a water supply.
That's right.
Or be able to do a tanker shuttle and provide two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute for two hours straight.
Right.
The water, the water tanks that we spoke of, I've, I've addressed this in workshops, and that's part of a larger project that's not just putting the wells in. And like we stated at the workshop, we were at a deficit in our fire budget that I was reluctant to spend any of that money until we know we can move forward trying to build that project to get it. My hope is to get it county-wide. But we've had people state that we're, you know, we're overstapped as we are. You have to be within five miles of a fire station and be able to provide that water.
Yeah.
But as far as the interlocal agreement, yes, that is something that's been worked on that I've, a lot of things that since I've taken over have, um-
Kinda better.
My, well, COVID hit, my plate was totally full with, you know, we don't just run fire, we run EMS as well. It's, it's definitely something that I'm working toward to getting that interlocal agreement on an automatic aid.
I would ask, I would encourage you and ask you to continue those talks with the city.
Yes, sir.
I don't live within five miles of the city limits, but it only makes common sense that the station downtown, if the fire call is on the eastern side of Live Oak, they're gonna get there faster than Station One, which is a little on the west side. So if that's the service, they may, folks may live in the city, may live in the county, but we all live in Swanee County. So if that's a service that you guys can get together on to provide the folks that live within five miles, I would encourage you to do that, please.
And I think that it's definitely something that can be worked out. We've done, I will say that I've been here a long time and this has been attempted in the past and we've had some issues that where, you know, once it started-
Well, let's roll our sleeves up without the mines and see if we can get it done.
We can get it done.
Thank you, chief.
Hold on, chief.
Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You go ahead.
Commissioner Fleming.
I, I hear what Commissioner Land is, is saying, but do it make a difference with the city and the county, if they're not certified or dual-certified, would it make a difference?
Not in, not on the fire side. As long as they're certified firemen going, it does not make one difference. And like I said, it, it extends our reach of our five-mile zone right now a little north and east is, is, is how, how it would extend that and, and maybe a little south.
I just want to bring that out so there won't be no losses.
Yes, sir.
Well, have we ever thought about combining them two fire departments? The county and the city? The city fire department and if you got two of them in the city limits of Live Oak, I mean, it makes sense to me. Have we ever talked to the city about doing that?
There's been discussions in the past, but that's definitely above me. And prior to me, me being in the chief role.
Just, just, just a question.
Yes, sir.
I think that was before any of our time that any discussions were there. But my question, Mr. Cato had mentioned it.
Pull your, pull your microphone close.
I wanted you to speak to this, mention the ISO rating and having the tanks and all. I know we discussed at one of the workshops possibly getting with some of the farmers and being able to tap some of their irrigation pumps as well. Is that something that we can do and, and help lower those or expand those ISO ratings by having that available to us?
There again, the, to lower an ISO rating, if our current ISO rating right now for the county is a four, it's a four-four X, which is if you're, if you have a water supply, if you're within a thousand foot of a water supply, you have a four. If you're outside of that thousand feet, but you're within five miles of a fire station, you have a four X, which is the old nine. If you're outside of five miles, you have a ten. Ten is considered basically no fire coverage. The, this, and this is solely by ISO. Now, not all insurance companies follow ISO. Some of them do their own thing. Some of them do use the ISO protection class. The water, the water tanks or farmer's wells or, or whatever we decide, whether we put in tanks, wells, use a farmer's well, is part of a total project because you have to be able to transfer that water from that, from that well or tank to whatever, um, address that they pick and flow that water for, you have to flow two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute for two hours straight. It's thirty thousand gallons of water. So if we put tanks up, that's thirty thousand gallon storage tanks that have to be at each site. If we put a well in, it has to be capable of flowing two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute. We can put the wells in, but if we don't have the personnel and apparatus to transfer the water, and it has to be county-wide, we can't do it in seven zones and miss one. And we, and we miss, we, we lose our, it doesn't work. It has to be all or none. ISO picks the address, you go to it. But they also look at the personnel. When you look at a, a fire scene, the first four people that are on scene are dedicated to be firefighters. They can't have any other job. Two of them fight fire, two are outside in case something happens to the two inside. They can take on other small jobs on the scene as long as they're capable immediately to rescue that firefighter if something happened inside. So to have the personnel on that water supply, you have to have other people to be able to bring those. In the past, in Swanee County, we've relied on our, we call them reserves now, but our volunteer firemen. Over the course of the last ten to fifteen years, our volunteer firemen have gotten older and the new, everybody that we've recruited to try to be a volunteer, the state has raised and they only count as a fireman if they're certified as a fire one. The state has raised the requirements to become a fire one high enough that guys can go to school another six to eight weeks and be a certified fireman, spend six months in EMT school and get a job and make a career out of it. So a lot of the younger folks that we've recruited as volunteers over, they realize how much, you know, just another six to eight months worth of training and they can make a career out of it. They've- six to eight months worth of training and they can make a career out of it. They've made a career out of it. And fortunately, we've hired some local folks here, you know, we've been able to put them to work in Swanee County. But it's at the detriment of our volunteer service. Volunteer services everywhere in Florida are dwindling more and more. We still have some very dedicated volunteers. Um, there's, depending on the work schedule, there's twelve to fourteen guys in the county that respond, um, if they're off work. And they're very good help. They're very, they're very dedicated and they respond most every single time that they're called. But they also work, they have a job. So during the day, we have very few of those people available. Um, so the volunteerism is where we've, we're, we're lacking in personnel to be able to supplement for that water supply that in the past has, they've, 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 they've been really good at getting it there. Now, very seldom that we run out of water on a fire. But we have to provide that thirty thousand gallons for it to count as ISO.
Thank you, thank you. Chief Hammond.
Thank you.
Did I have, did I have anyone else wishing to speak on the fire?
Got one.
I have one more gentleman here. You're fine, sir. Come on, come on, come forward.
My name is Ford, seventy-three, fifth and one, Wiggins Road. Fire department had plenty of money, but they misuse the same thing applies to the Wexler Park. They need to give him the question a lot closer.
Anyone else? Seeing no one at this time, we'll have further discussion with the board.
At this time, Mr. Harris, did you have anything you need to add about the fire at this time?
Gentlemen, I would-
I would only confirm that, yes, the county did have conversations with the city a number of years ago about doing something with that fire station on the north side of the tracks. And then that result was it, it did not materialize. I mean, there's a lot to it, and I'm not gonna try to discuss all that right now. That's maybe for another day, but we have had conversations in the past about that.
From the board, do I have any comments? I'm on, I'm gonna ask a question, a couple of questions. And I'm just gonna ask for a show of hands to try to, for me to understand the feeling of the audience with those that did come up and speak. So if we're talking about a, a twenty dollar increase per year on the fire, that's roughly, doing the math, five cent a day, something to that effect? How many folks in the audience have an issue with the twenty dollars? If I could see a show of hands. Okay. I appreciate that. Now, how many in the audience has an issue with the way it was presented? Hmm. Very clear. Yes, ma'am. I would have, you'd have to come down and speak, ma'am, because I can't hear you from there.
All right. My name's Jan Tiffany. I live at one four eight, one four, one thirty-fifth place, Live Oak. So I'm pretty on the south end of the county. I have three units on my property. All three are trailers. If any one of them caught fire, no fire department's gonna save them because you can't get there faster than a fire can take out a trailer. Uh, one of the trailers shouldn't be inhabited. I got mad at my son and made him move in. But we need to discuss the garbage because I'm, at that rate, I'm one single person paid for all three units.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm tired. I make twenty-four hundred dollars a month. That includes groceries, gas. And I don't think too many people can survive on twenty-four hundred dollars a month and get to eat. You can't get in the work now. So anyway.
Our, our fire assessment was, was what previously?
It was, it was current, pre-, last year was a hundred dollars.
Right. Just so the gentleman, I think, spoke up and said not a hundred and twenty, but the only increase is, it was already a hundred.
The proposed is a twenty dollar increase.
Correct. Uh, so here's the situation, gentlemen. I'm at, I'm at the pleasure of the board. Uh, obviously, we've got a lot more to discuss tonight. We need to make a decision on this. I'm listening to any comments you'd like to make or if there's, if someone would offer a motion.
Uh, Mr. Pravat, what is it? I'm new here. What is it? We have to actually make a motion and finalize both assessments?
Yes, sir.
And right now, we're talking about fire?
Yeah, for what the number will be for-
Right. The next-
Next year.
Fiscal year.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, and, and to add that, to make clear, whatever we decide on tonight for fire, what we're discussing right now, for it to change this time next year, we would have to put it on, on an agenda, have a meeting on it, and then do just what we're doing now again.
Yes, sir.
Because you have to adopt, so.
Public notice.
Yeah, I'm not-
Right.
Right.
I'm on the, I mean, that's, that's the only way I'm gonna do anything moving forward. It's gonna be public notice that we, I mean, that's, that's the majority of-
I think we can do a consensus.
Public notice and I'm, I'm listening. I, I'm not hard, I'm, I mean, my hearing's bad, but it ain't that bad.
That's right.
I mean, it's uh-
It, it's, it's, it's a difficult, if you don't know, can you-
Just speak up.
Can you guys hear me now? I'll try to get right on this thing. It's, it's sad to have these, not sad, it's encouraging to have these discussions, but it's hard when you hear someone that, like the lady was just here, she's, she's so far away that by the time we get there, it may burn up. But yet, I think that's the intent of our fire department, our chief, is to, to grow those services as, as we're growing every day. And I don't know what the number is. I've heard crazy numbers, hundreds of people moving to Swanee County every day, uh, or every month, excuse me. But with that comes more services we have to provide. And that's what puts us in this horrible situation.
Get more rest.
It, it, it does, it does. And, and that's what I think you have to balance out. And that's our job is to try to, I guess, predict that, if you will, by the studies that were presented to us and, and obviously our own decisions and hearing from you guys. So I just wanted to say that. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, could you introduce me to the end of that study? I believe you said, "The mayor can ask for a crossfire."
Yes, sir, we can have him come to the podium.
What are they called? Case law inspired, anything like that down there. You gotta talk plain, go get it.
Jeff Rackley, Senior Project Manager, Government Services Group.
Could you, I think what they're asking is just give some background on who your company is and what you guys do and, and how long you've been doing it?
So we've been doing assessment studies in Florida for about the past twenty, twenty-five years. Pioneered some of the original studies in the state, along with the law firm, Neighbors Givlin-Nickerson, who you've also been working with. Um, I've been doing this about fifteen years with the-
Doing what? So what is it you do to finish this assessment?
This, this company that's done this study represents, and I understand the people's gonna roar and scream. I'm here to try to solve problems tonight, sir.
Assessment of what?
And-
Are they accountants or are they fire experts?
I can't answer that. They're fire experts.
Assessment of what? That's what I asked.
Can you explain to them why we have to do an assessment?
About why the assessments need to be-
Why do we do that and what, why do we have to spend that money to do that?
You don't necessarily have to do an assessment study, but there are certain case law requirements to make a valid program in order to charge people. One of those is that it has to be fair and reasonable, logical, and based on actual data, factual information. That's why the county elected to hire us, along with the law firm, Neighbors Givlin-Nickerson, to do these studies on your behalf. We've taken the numbers provided by the county, the, the data that was given to us, calculated everything, and given you those maximum assessment amounts. That's what you were provided with. That's what was also included on the notices. We don't make the decision. That's up to the board. I, I don't have a stake in this, so the decision you make tonight doesn't affect me one way or the other. I understand it does affect everyone in this room. It is a very big and important decision. We can just give you the facts and the information and then let you make the decision that's best for your county. Thank you.
Mr. Hale, do you have anything further?
That's- Commissioner Land.
Mr. White.
Anything? Commissioner Fleming? At this time, is there any further discussion on the twenty dollar fire assessment increase? I will ask, I will entertain a motion. If I have no motion, it will fail for lack of not having one. And the assessment, if I'm understanding it right, will stay what it was last year. Is that true or not?
No, sir, you still need to set a number.
But I'm saying they could set it back to what it was.
Yes, sir, but you still have to make a motion that that is what the number is.
I got you. So gentlemen-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm a sales guy by trade, so I'm all about compromise. These folks made a big effort to be here tonight and have sat here for hours. Um, and we all agreed by consensus to, to send a letter out at the one-twenty. Would anybody, or, or would the board consider splitting the difference and meeting these guys in the middle at one-ten? I mean, you're talking about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five houses. I mean-
You're saying increase it ten dollars?
Increase, I mean, that's splitting the difference. I mean, I'm not, I'm just asking you guys what your thoughts are. I'm not saying that we should do it or shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that, I mean, we got a public outcry here. And, I mean, I'm still new here, but if you-
I didn't, I don't, I don't have a problem doing that. I mean, that cuts it to two and a half cent a day. And the majority of the people I see out here, sure, we got people that's not in support of it. I understand that. But the majority of the people are upset about the way it was presented. And we'll address that on the next issue. But we need to get to that issue. So I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying, but I need input from, from the board.
I mean, I just used that because it was in the middle, one-fifteen, one-eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna remind everyone and for the public in the room that may not, you know, be aware that in our, the last time this assessment was even, even looked at was eight years ago. And at that time, the study that was done set the maximum rate at a hundred and eighteen dollars eight years ago. It costs a lot more to do business today than it did eight years ago. What we're looking at going up this year puts us two dollars above what the maximum rate should have been back, you know, eight years ago. So this, if we don't, if we don't go to the hundred and twenty, our current assessment, uh, that the, the amount of revenue that's generated by the hundred dollar assessment still leaves the deficit that I presented to you guys in the workshop of a couple, about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand operating expenses alone. So I just, I, I just want, wanted to make that clear and, and, you know, look to you guys to, to, you know, try to keep it at, at least the one-twenty. We made a big, big compromise in the workshops over where we should, you know, where we should be according to this year's assessment to, and only went up to the hundred and twenty. That only puts us two dollars above where we should have been eight years ago. Um, and five cents a day to have the, you know, the ability to, you know, to save someone's life is not very much to ask.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Comments, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not putting a foot in the mouth, but as I think about it, it said that, you know, it's, it's about safety, saving lives. I remember sitting on this board and gentleman said that if his house catch on fire, he didn't want to fire engine at his house. I can't say that about mine and my family because I wouldn't want to sit and look at someone's house, uh, something get destroyed. And, uh, I think a life is more important, like right now, we, we in a pandemic. Unknown, we don't know what or who's next, but it will be someone next. And I hate to say it like that, but, uh, there's not a clear answer, a great, good answer. But sometimes we gotta do what we have to do, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, I just wanna move forward and just do what's right for this county.
Mr. Cameron.
I know we're supposed to be having it at one time, but I, I just have a question. Is whatever you're going to make a motion to do tonight, whatever that number is, is it going to also include in that motion that the public will be notified in, by mail again if it is to increase again?
I think that'd have to be a separate motion. That's, I think.
Well, it's not, that's not the way it's worded right now. It's worded right now-
I think, I don't know.
That it's a hundred and twenty dollars with the availability of going up without having a motion.
Yes, sir.
Without having another meeting. So it needs to be worded in that, in that motion.
Got you. So a-anything you're discussing tonight, the decision for this year, if we're talking about next year, that decision will have to be made next year, whether or not you're gonna notice people. I mean, you can all agree, come to a consensus, but I'll, I'll let the attorney, you know, weigh in on this if you want. But I don't think you can bind the future board now with making that decision that we're-
I understand.
You absolutely can do that i- if you want to. But there, there wouldn't be any further notice this year. The numbers we're talking about now, they're gonna go on the tax bill and everyone will see that on their tax bill.
I understand that, but the community wants a notice sent out. This board can make the decision to send a notice out in future years, even if all this board isn't here.
That's right.
Now, another board can come along behind us and change that. But if I understand it correctly, we can- I, I think he's misunderstood. We're not talking about what we adopt tonight, sending another notice out. I don't-
Yeah, yeah, there'd be no need for that.
They're, they're asking for next year.
But, but next year, you can send notices if, if you would like to do so.
The community wants us to, if we have a motion or if we make a different motion, they want to understand that, that that's what's gonna happen, that it, before we-
I'll, I'll leave that to your county attorney.
Thank you.
Wait on that. Mr. Pravat, tell me, tell me how I need this. I'm ready to get this done now. I wanna make the motion. I wanna, I wanna accomplish sending this notice out before we even set the price.
Right.
Let's just accomplish it. Tell me what I need to do.
Well, statutorily, what you've done so far is only applicable to this year. Okay? So you need to go ahead and get this year done, done with, for what you're gonna do this year. For the, uh, notice provision is different from the, what would be required statutorily for next year. And I don't believe you can bind the board until this time next year to make sure that the notice goes out.
Nah, but can we?
You've, you've done, you've done one thing and all you're doing right now, I mean, y'all can vote to have a consensus and it'll be in there to be with the board. And I'll just have to look to see exactly, you know, if you can carry it forward.
It's clear. If it clears the nose on your face, Mr. Attorney, all you got to do.
There's two different things that you're talking about, though.
Did he say he's here or he'll say it at the time?
Mr. Chairman.
This is for this year, but in the future, they will send out notices of tax increases.
Right.
Don't say nobody.
I, I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, what the attorney is saying, and I think I would like for every one of y'all to maybe nod your head on this, because we're being recorded more publicly, is have a consensus when it comes time. If we can't vote on tonight, if we can't make a decision for next year tonight, maybe as soon as this is passed, can we then make a motion?
I, I'm quite frank with you, I'll need to go back and look and see. I do not honestly know a hundred percent. I can't a hundred percent confidently tell you-
Regardless of, if we don't have a motion-
Regardless of if we don't have a motion, it's on public record that we have a consensus of five people that says send a notice out.
That's right.
That's correct.
So I need a price, I need a, I need someone to help me right here and let's move forward.
Real quick on that price, during our workshop discussions, I know the $20 came up, but was that not a, a a round number we came, what, didn't we say 18, bring it up to the current, would hold us?
118 was the previous study. What was the maximum you could go to up on that, the previous eight-year study? So we just went to 120 and just made it a round number.
I got it, yep, that's, that's right. Mr. First.
Just name and address for the record. Christopher's County Road 349, 15862, Live Oak. The only issue I have, uh, if we decided a number, you know, whatever works, the verbiage of the motion. I'd rather hear the people will be notified if there is a proposal of an increase rather than an increase. You know, they can tell me my light bill went up and I stopped paying. They can tell me it's going to go up and I can call them and find out why. So the verbiage would be if there is to be a proposal of an increase, people to be notified. That's what I'm just, just so it's correct. So nobody goes, well, I got a call, I got a letter that it's going up and I can't do anything about it. If there's a proposal of it, then they get an opportunity as this is, that's pretty much all.
Mr. Land, you got anything?
No, sir, I'm gonna wait and see. Here.
Ask the question one more time, because I want to see those hands.
You want to see the hands again?
The, the same two questions, please ask it again, please.
How many people have a problem with a $20 a year increase? Please raise your hands. On fire, this is fire only. How many people in the audience have a problem with the way you was giving notice? Thank you. Well, that, I mean, I, I, I.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, in defense of the board, none of us saw the letter before it was went out, and that was our fault. I didn't see that letter, I, I didn't, I didn't proofread the letter, I didn't, I got the letter when it landed in my mailbox. Um, you know, so in, in defense of these five guys, we didn't write it, unfortunately, we didn't proof it, but just here's, here's, just to clarify, I'm just the mediator in the meeting. I cannot, or I would, as unpopular as it is, I cannot make a motion and I cannot second a motion. But I can vote on it as soon as I have a, a motion and a second. So all I need is that, I don't care if you want to keep it the same, keep it the same, but let's do something and move forward, gentlemen. I'll make a motion that we go to the 120.
120?
Yes, sir.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Land that we go to 120.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner White, all in favor say aye. Aye, aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries, 5-0.
Yes, sir.
My name is, uh, Richard Bond, uh, 18225, 211th Road. I'm listening to all these discussions here and, uh, the reason I came to Swanee County 20 years ago is because it was a good place and I heard good stuff about it and that is pretty much a handout for the last 20 years. However, right now, the way I see it, uh, my obligation is to my family, okay? Your obligation is to the people that voted you into your position, not to a bureaucracy that you're trying to prop up and hold up. So what I want you guys to do, and I can see to you guys, because, uh, I think you're similar to me, I hope you are.
We, and we are you, we are you folks. I mean, we're, we're the sun, we're all Swanee County citizens. We're just in a bad spot right here.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. My suggestion to all of you is that you take a hard look at the way you're spending money. Take a hard look at your budget, line item if you have to. Thank you very much. If you do that with seriousness, you have to be serious about what you're doing. You can't always try to get more, try to get more. We, we're hard, uh, coming on hard times. All you gotta do is look at the gas problem, that's one indicator. Thank you.
Thank you. At, at this time, I will close the public hearing on the fire, that's rate resolution, on the final rate resolution fire. We'll move forward into our, you know, item number 13. At 5:05 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to discuss for possible board action, adoption of the final rate resolution for solid waste assessment for fiscal year 2021 and 22. At this time, we will go through the same process. If you think, it doesn't matter if you speak or not, if you think you would like to be heard, Mr. Pravat will speak to you now.
Would you, would you each stand, then please, ladies and gentlemen? And each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth to help you guide? All right, thank you very much, and again, I remind you, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, I've had a couple requests for a restroom break, five minutes, we'll start right back. But I won't go ahead and let you, let you make your comments.
I appreciate it very much and I thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
My name is Floyd Messer. I live at 13609 County Road 49, place called Ironwood. I can afford to pay whatever your assessments are. If you assess fire on my land, you're sued. The first man addressed it is unconstitutional in this state. This man's going to figure it out, you can vote tonight for next year. State of Florida representatives pass laws all the time and rules all the time that are undone by the next legislation. So for a fact, you can. Now moving on, you want to double waste management this year from 150 to 300. You had a surplus of over $700,000 last year. Care nothing about that either. What I do care about is the fact that you're destroying our county requirements of driving our gasoline up and down roads to dump pits just because you got a deal with a management company that don't know nothing. Do any of y'all know what it cost in Columbia County to have your curbside pickup made in a year? Do you know what it cost you a year? Anybody?
I think they just went to 246.
226 right now. They're wanting to go to 246, they're having a public hearing, they're having a hard time. Now maybe our county is a little more sparsely. So maybe a waste manager didn't want 275 if you like. That's still less than 300. I have three miles of 49. It looks like a dump 90% of the time because the people drive their vehicles to your dumps with uncovered beds on their trucks and it blows out everywhere. Then you pay people to come pick up my trash so you can mow it about three times a year. It's a mess. Do you realize how much money spent by the people in this county just driving to a dump to take their garbage off? You won't let us burn it. Why don't you pick it up like most people? I used to tell people Swanee County was the best place to live, period. I've lived here since 68. Uh, my family's been in Florence since 1787, so don't, nobody start bringing those times in Florida on me. The facts are, we have failed and stayed behind Columbia County for opportunity and services by at least 25 years. Still a great place to live. 25 years ago, they started picking up garbage at the curb. Hit away with all them, all them dump sites, they had dump sites just like you did. Close them down, there's no better way, pick it up at the curb. If you right now polled this audience or you polled Swanee County, you'd find 90% of the people in Swanee County would prefer to have their garbage picked up at their driveway than they had drive it six, eight, 10, 12 miles from a dump site. You need to break the contract with these people you have, you need to pick up the phone, call a waste manager, get other people like them and get a price to pick up our garbage sitting right there. Now y'all have any common sense in the whole group, y'all come up with one reason why you shouldn't and tell me now.
I don't disagree with you, dog.
Well, why don't we? Why are we, why are we doing these crazy things without thinking, oh, well, that's where it's been? No, that ain't the right answer, boss. Listen, I, I ran a business, I'm retired, and I can afford anything y'all throw at me, and if it's not right, I'm going to jump on you with all the lawyers I got. And they won't be him, I promise you that. And you don't want, if you knew anything about Columbia County 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago, and you still know some of the old politicians like Law and Weave, check them out. Ask who Floyd Messer is. When I tell you something, you can write it down. Joe Williams was president of the bank one time, he had two customers, Mr. Music and me. Why? Because we were square fair shooters and his bank needed to be able to take care of his two biggest customers or they couldn't take care of anybody. When I tell you something, it's the honest truth as I know it. I don't make it up. I got the mount right here from Columbia County in my hand. And do not make a mistake of charging us for fire on open land, don't do that, be a big mistake. And I appreciate your time, I want you to think about what you're doing. If you got to go from $150 to $300, go to the curb. Help this county, help clean it up, help it make it a better place to live. And the gasoline you'd save by individuals out here, you couldn't, he can't even add it up. So please, use common sense tonight. Put this thing to rest and say, we need a further study to see if we should have curbside pickup. Now, thank you for your time. Y'all being patient, I appreciate it very much.
Yes, sir.
I gotta go cook now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry I wasn't in here when you got started, but I was going to say, if you turn to those, that solid waste assessment discussion, you'll see that that's actually one of the options that's listed there is, and I've, I've complimented the gentleman for his comments, but, uh, that's one of the options that was listed here for us to consider is bidding out for curbside pickup. I just want to mention that you've got several options that were listed there.
What was that, did it have a number in there?
The, well, I, I've got two numbers here, and I did this intentionally so that I was getting numbers from different locations. We don't have a bid, I mean, it's going to take some time to do that, but I've got about half a dozen things here that could be options. Um, I know the city of Live Oak charges $229 a year, uh, once, once a week, curbside pickup. I spoke to Clay County, they're doing, now they've got 69,000 households and it's entirely possible that there could be a difference in the cost based on the number of households, but in Clay County, they're paying $226.44 a year. Um, that's their assessment, and they've got one day per week, curbside pickup. Uh, and that includes not only your household waste, but your yard waste, and they had been doing recycling as well, but they just canceled that because the provider of that service can't keep up. So that's just a thought.
Let me, I got a question for the public again, I'll ask for show of hands. How many folks in the public would like to entertain the option of curbside pickup? All right, put your hands down, please, how many would be against it? Okay, if the number, and that number, I mean, it's, the folks that raised their hands, if the number was the 300, would you be willing to do that? Say it.
What does that number represent, per year or per week?
The two, the, the 300 is per year, that, that, that number is per year, that's leaving collection sites the way that they are and continuing the business and taking the garbage to folks in Georgia to a regional facility under contract with Waste Management. The number that I had cited here for illustration purposes, the $226 in Clay County is their annual assessment. They get one day per week, curbside pickup.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we discuss curbside pickup, we're not going to get, until we address the, the disposal side and where to take it, I mean, I've talked to Waste Pro, I've called these other companies that Mr. Harris has, I, I've, I've talked to them just off the cuff in the last couple of weeks. They're going to have the same problem that we got right now, where to take it. So until we address where we're going to take it and firm up a solid deal there that's better than what we got, talking about curbside, I mean, the first thing we got to figure out is, I mean, it like, you know, these other private sectors that offer the curbside, it's available, I mean, we have to pay for it, but if they don't have a place to take it close to us, that number is going to be high. I mean, I think we need a secure place to, to get rid of it and then look, in addition to, here would be the curbside number if you have a facility.
I understand what you're saying, but I needed to have in my mind if people, if there's a majority here that would like to see curbside.
I'm saying. Is what I'm trying. I'm not saying I was opposed to it, but I'm just saying that if we can secure a better deal than we currently have, that number.
Ma'am, we're going to have a discussion right now and then in just a few minutes, I'll have a public comment.
The number on the curbside price might be better if we can get a better number here.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't disagree with you for one minute. If we had to depend on that waste being disposed in the same location, the number would be much higher, without question. In Clay County, though, what happened was their contract is actually with advanced disposal. Now, we know that Waste Management just bought them out, but that's the number that they're getting with advanced disposal right now. I don't know if that's going to change, but I did call and speak to that gentleman there. That's the only reason, in my opinion, that they're able to do that, is because it's owned by the same company. If we were having to, if a, a provider of the curbside service was having to charge a rate here to pick up and then dispose at our landfill for us to haul it at the rates that we've been quoted, you're right, the numbers would be off the charts.
So, so what you're recommending is we go to Waste Management, because they're the only ones who've responded to our bid on the private sector that would offer curbside, so you're, what you're suggesting is talk to them?
No, no, we wouldn't talk to them. What we would do is we would bid using DemandStar, that online format that we used before. I don't know who else might be interested, to be honest with you. I do know, or I'm convinced, that there's some smaller carriers that would be interested. We do not have flow control, okay, we don't have flow control here, so we wouldn't require them to keep the waste here. If they found a, a location where they could dispose of that waste at a lesser price, then they could do that and very likely they would.
What I'm saying is, is where, where we're at right now, because logistically, strategically, the private sector, Waste Management is your only option.
I don't disagree with that.
So going, reaching out to another, another party, Waste Pro, Joe's Garbage Company, if they don't have a place to take it, that's a good deal, less than what we got now. Their price is going to be much higher than the 300. I mean, we're not going to be able to afford it because they're going to be paying the $57 a ton to truck it to Waste Management. I mean, we already put this out, the bid, and Waste Management was the only company that, that bid, only private sector company that bid. So, I mean, we can ask any company who want to, but until they have a landfill to carry it to, that is a better deal than what we just got. The number's, 300's not going to touch curbside.
Well, just to clarify for the public too, in reference to what Mr. Messer was saying, Lake City has their own landfill.
Exactly, exactly what I want to say.
So that is keeping that number down in check for them, just, just for public knowledge.
They own their own, only operate their own county landfill, therefore their disposal of fifty-seven dollars a ton is significantly less than Swanee's.
Right.
So, I mean, we can talk about curbside, but I think we're putting a cart in front of the horse.
I agree.
Mr. Harris, would you like to start us off with, uh, some discussion in background? I know over the last couple of weeks, we've had some discussion in other meetings, and I'd like to, for everybody to understand kinda where we're at with that part.
I, I'll try to cover some history, and I'll try to do it as quickly as possible. I know that most of the people here, at least, haven't attended the other meetings and conversations that we've had, so I, I'll try to spend a little bit of time covering some quick history. Until, the county operated an unlined landfill until nineteen ninety-eight, and they closed it. And then they built another, a smaller one, which closed in two thousand seven. But in two thousand three, uh, the county executed a contract with Waste Management for disposal at a regional facility in Georgia, it's in Folksdon, Georgia. The rate at that time was fourteen dollars and fifty cents a ton, and that particular contract had a annual escalator provision in it, based on a formula that was associated with the Consumer Price Index. So from two thousand three to two thousand ten, that rate stayed almost the same, and it went up in two thousand ten to fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents a ton. Now, this is only the disposal rate. This isn't the cost of transportation. That was a separate component that the county was paying. In two thousand twelve, the rate had gone up to seventeen dollars and nine cents per ton for disposal. In two thousand fourteen, we bid that service. At that time, advanced disposal was a competitor with Waste Management, um, Advanced Disposals in Valdosta. In two thousand fourteen, we got a rate, uh, through the bid process of nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents a ton for disposal. And that low bid was from Waste Management. We paid another, in that contract, there was an additional nineteen dollars and forty-five cents, uh, per ton for transportation. Now, as soon as we opened those bids and got the rates, and that rate was nineteen sixty, nineteen cents, uh, excuse me, nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents a ton for disposal, we were contacted by a gentleman that's associated with the Ocilla landfill west of us that has multiple counties involved in it. And the proposal that we received was that we instead join with Ocilla. But the rate that they were offering us was thirty-five dollars a ton, just for the disposal. So, thirty-five dollars a ton wasn't very attractive when we had a bid for nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents a ton. So the county declined at that time. In two thousand fourteen, uh, we entered into a five-year contract with Waste Management. Uh, the total cost with the disposal and the transportation came to thirty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. So that was actually less expense than what we had been paying. We saved five dollars and forty-eight cents a ton when we entered into that contract. In May of two thousand nineteen, the contract came to an end, but they agreed to extend it for one year. So the rates remained thirty-three dollars and sixty-one cents a ton. And then in twenty twenty, May of twenty twenty, we, uh, entered into another extension, um, and it went up slightly. It went up to thirty-five dollars and eleven cents a ton. Now let me just mention, I'm gonna backtrack out, if you have a copy of this, I'm gonna go back to a note that I had made in here. In two thousand thirteen, the national average tipping fee was forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents per ton. That's the disposal fee. And we were at eighteen dollars and two cents. Earlier this year, when we spoke to Waste Management, uh, Waste Management about another extension, um, they said it was time to bid, that they wouldn't agree to another extension on that contract. So we bid, and we did get a bid back at thirty-two dollars and fifty cents a ton, which was considerably higher than what we had been paying. They also offered a transportation cost of twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents a ton. And both of those rates were tied, uh, to an annual escalator provision based on the CPI. Total cost was fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents a ton. So we contacted Ocilla, Columbia County, and New River landfill, which is quite a ways east of us. Ocilla and New River are owned by, uh, multi-county groups. We spoke to them about two things, taking our waste and, um, offering a, a decent rate. They couldn't guarantee us that they would take our waste, but they did offer to give us the rates they were publishing at the time. Ocilla's disposal rate is forty-three, or was forty-three dollars a ton, which was ten dollars and fifty cents a ton higher than Waste Management. Columbia County's rate was fifty-two dollars a ton, which is nineteen dollars and fifty cents a ton higher than Waste Management. And New River is forty-five dollars a ton, which is twelve dollars and fifty cents a ton higher than Waste Management. Now, Ocilla and New River, I think that there may be a chance, and I spoke, you know, in our last meeting, I guess it was last Thursday, we spoke about the idea of going and meeting. Those two landfills have a board of directors over each of them that's made up of commissioners from the counties that are involved in those groups. But it's possible that we could, uh, go to them and try to negotiate a better rate than what they're, um, had quoted us at the time. I think that's a very real possibility, but you can see with these differences that they'd have to come down significantly to get down to where, um, they match what we're paying with Waste Management. No, sir, that doesn't include the transportation cost. The transportation cost of twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents a ton that Waste Management offered, I think we all recognized that that was high. So, um, in June, um, at the board meeting, we discussed, uh, bidding, well, actually, we discussed buying the equipment, doing the hauling ourselves. At that time, the decision was made to just bid the transportation component and see if we could get better numbers, so we did. Had a lot of phone calls, spoke to a lot of companies. But when it was time for the bids to be open, we didn't have any bids. No one responded, and I think everyone's aware of the nationwide problems with, you know, trying to get, uh, enough truckers to keep up with the demand. Um, in any event, we priced out the equipment. We've used numbers from competitively bid contracts for the equipment. And based on some numbers that I presented in the last board meeting, it looks like we have the potential to save three hundred thousand dollars a year on transportation if we were to do it ourselves. Um, now, we would have to, we'd have that service on the equipment until it was paid off, but even with that, it still looks like we could save about three hundred, somewhere between three hundred and three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. The board, uh, did contract with Neighbors Giblin and GSG. They were involved in the rate study. Um, and I would concur that they used the numbers that we provided. Aside from the extreme increase in the cost of services with Waste Management, we also included, uh, money to begin, uh, modifying our collection sites, going with compactors and away from these eight-yard dumpsters. But, um, one thing I need to mention was that while we didn't have much success in those phone calls with the government-owned landfills, uh, we went ahead and negotiated with Waste Management. And instead of being hit year one with fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents, uh, per ton, we got them to agree to reduce it and give us a tiered system that was implemented a little more slowly. So the first year, the rate is actually fifty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents a ton, instead of the fifty-nine seventy-seven. And then it goes up each year thereafter. So we were trying to slow down the rate of increase and try to absorb that, um, over time. But we've also talked about other options, um, in the last meeting. And I'll just say, the commissioners have been looking at every option we can think of, and we've been exploring everything that we can at a rapid pace, trying to come up with answers. We've looked at the possibility of building another landfill, and we have our consultant here tonight. He was with us last Thursday when we talked extensively about that, and I provided information to commissioners, and I know that they needed time to study that information as well. And we could talk about that some more, but other options, uh, that I listed in some of the paperwork that we circulated earlier was the idea of, um, only providing, now, I don't want you to laugh about this, but I'm just gonna tell you, I'm sharing these not because these are my recommendations, but these are some of the things that some other counties are doing. Um, we could only, uh, we could just provide the disposal service and stop providing a collection service at the collection sites. Now, there's actually a county I spoke to that does just that. They have all of their residents that want to use the county landfill, bring the waste there, and they load it into containers, and they haul it off. That's all they do. But when I spoke to the gentleman that's running that operation, he said that they probably only take in about ten percent of the county's waste, that probably ninety percent of it, individuals are contracting with their own, uh, entering into contracts on their own with, uh, companies to haul their waste away. Uh, number two was to reduce the level of service that we're providing. We have fourteen collection sites. Um, we could reduce that to seven or eight. That would cut some costs, but that poses a significant challenge to our ability to handle all the waste in the fewer locations. I mentioned that we had budgeted in the current year for modifying, uh, some of those sites, but you'd have to modify the remaining sites in order to take on the additional waste, because you can't take on all that waste with eight-yard dumpsters. Uh, another option would be to reduce the number of operating days at the collection sites from four to one or two. And again, I shared with you that the city of Live Oak and lots of other locations are only providing curbside pickup once a week, so we could do something similar with our collection sites if we wanted to continue to operate them. But that, again, poses the same problem with trying to take on everyone's waste in your collection sites on one day a week, uh, and trying to do it with those dumpsters. I don't think, without modifications, that we could really do that. Uh, number four, and I think some of the speakers, a couple of them at least, alluded to this. Um, and I say this in jest, but we could take a look at all the services that the county's offering and just say, okay, we're gonna prioritize, and, um, we're gonna look at law enforcement and the property appraisers office, clerk of the court, fire rescue, parks and recreation, library, road grading, mowing, solid waste disposal, and we're just gonna look at all those in their budgets, and we're just gonna make adjustments and come up with whatever it takes to get this done. But I'm sure the sheriff would run up here, and he, he wouldn't be too interested in that. Um, and no one else would be either. We could build a landfill with a public-private partnership. And we haven't talked about that. Um, and I don't know if we would get any takers, but it's a real possibility. Um, the potential benefit is a reduction in the cost of construction and operational expenses. And I'm gonna give you an example. Um, if you go online, you'll find this, if you do a study, in two thousand eleven, and I wasn't there at the time, but Marion County entered into an agreement with a landfill by the name of Heart of Florida landfill, and it's in Lake Penasoffke, right near High Seventy-Five. They paid, I think it was twenty-five million dollars upfront, and bought capacity in that landfill. And only now, they're beginning to use that capacity. But they got that capacity at eight dollars a ton. Eight dollars a ton. And that's only because primarily that it, it's a company that's performing the work, probably doing the construction themselves and operating themselves. So that's just an option I throw out there. We could entertain that as a possibility of, um, trying to find a, or create a public-private partnership. Uh, number six on here was what we've already talked about, and that was bidding out curbside pickup. Number seven is continue the disposal, uh, contract for disposal with Waste Management. Number eight was negotiate with other counties for disposal. Um, and again, they'd have to come out quite a bit, and we could go meet with them and try to negotiate a lower number with some of these county-owned landfills. One thing that came out in our conversation last Thursday was that, um, our small volume actually results in a much higher cost of operations to this county because we have such a small volume. The same number of personnel and equipment could actually service a much greater volume, and that's why regional landfills do so much better, because they have much higher volumes coming in. Yet their operational expenses wouldn't be much different than what it would cost us to try to operate a landfill here if we started a new one. Number nine on here was, uh, simply to continue the conversation with our consultant, uh, Mr. Locklear, and talk more about the idea of building a landfill and any benefits, but those, those benefits would be probably long-term because of near-term. I don't think that we'd see any reduction in the cost. So those are all just ideas. And I don't know that there's a great option for us right now. The expense is very large. So, commissioners, that's what I wanted to share. Um, and we've got all these rates and numbers. If anyone wants those, we can give you copies as well.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. This time, uh, Commissioner Land, did you have some comments?
Yes, sir. Um, since we met Thursday, I have spent a lot of time, um, on this garbage issue. It's a big one. It's a, it's a passionate one, not really for myself, but, um, for every citizen in this county. And I've spent hours with our staff on finance, trying to figure out a way to get it better. And, and I'm not gonna play the blame game. I'm gonna be, be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. But I will say that, that I am disappointed in staff. And, and, and when I say that, it is, I spent a half a day on the phone tracking down the executive director of a landfill that is closer to us, it's municipality, municipality-owned, and this forty-five dollar, forty-three, forty-five, um, I went over and met with those guys, sat in their conference room and met with them. Um, I didn't have board approval to do that, but I didn't have time to get it. Um, that meeting was confirmed that I can meet with them on, uh, Friday, so I wasn't, I didn't have time to get that from you guys. But I went over there as a citizen of Swanee County to see if I could get a better deal. And gentlemen, we can get much better than forty-five. We can get south of thirty-five, um, dollars a ton. There's, they're, they're round-trip. They're seventy miles closer, which means we're gonna save on the freight. You know, I got, I got some ideas. I, I passed around, um, a pro forma budget, if you will, that I got the finance. And, and we spent, I have to thank Keith and Nina. I spent probably five or six hours with them over the course of three or four days. Not that they needed more work to do, but I needed their help to make sure I was doing this thoroughly. And, and after meeting with the folks that I met with, the reason that we only, that we didn't get a bid, Mr. Harris, you should know this, they're municipality-owned, they can't bid. But, you know, their words, not mine, they told us they would give us an interlocal agreement at a number less than forty-five. Um, had that happened, and, and, and we ironed that out back in March, April, probably wouldn't be here tonight. Now, I'm just one of five, but with the numbers that I passed out to y'all, I ran a pro forma, pro forma budget at two twenty-five, and that's, that's, that's authorizing for you guys agreeing to go sit down, um, with this other landfill. And we do need to haul it ourselves. I agree with Mr. Harris. The twenty-seven dollars a ton freight, that's, that's, we can do it cheaper. Mr. Harris, he's dead center on that. I don't think we need three trucks. I think we could do it with two. Um, I don't think we need six trailers. I think we could get by with five. As long as, on, on, on the trailers, as long as we have, or the trucks, as long as we have a, a, another truck in our fleet that could be pulled for overflow, you know, say it hauls a lowboy or equipment that's capable of making, you know, hooking up to a walk-in floor trailer. Um, this landfill doesn't have a tipper, so that you'd have to buy walk-in floor trailers, which are, which are a little bit more expensive than the tippers. Um, not that much more. I mean, you're talking seven, eight. Not that much more, I mean, you're talking seven, eight, maybe 10,000 depending on the manufacturer. But we can do better, guys. We can do better. We can do, we can find a better deal at south of 35. I'm confident in that. They were confident of that. They do have a board, but to get anything in writing, they have to go to their board of directors. They're ran by, they're owned by three counties and there's two commissioners from each county that sits on their board. And they would be more than happy to take our solid waste. They have in excess of 85 years left on the lifespan of their landfill without ours. But we're dropping the bucket to some of the other counties that they take. Now, I trimmed my budget really, really tight. I took out the compacters. I did leave the knuckle boom trucks. I did leave some of the replacement equipment that we're gonna need. But I did take out the trucks to haul the cans. I took out the containers. What I did do to generate revenue in there is I went through our rate sheet and what our rate sheet is for our commercial can customers is based on 46.88 a ton. Well, our new resolution is 65. So, the first thing we need to do is go up on our commercial cans. That's gonna generate more revenue because right now our commercial can, they're paying rent to us based on a rate that is less than what we paid to get rid of it. So, we need to, we need to, we need to adjust those monthly, however the folks pay that have a commercial can, to what the new tipping fee, the $65 a ton. That's gonna generate revenue. Yeah, we may lose some. Some folks may say, I don't want your can anymore, come get it. And that's okay. We're gonna lose the waste, the volume. That was one of my ideas. I think that there's a lot of moving parts here in this budget and I've come to realize those. And if you start, the more of these moving parts you mess with, the more variables are and the harder it is to really tie it down to know what that firm number is. So, I ran this at 225. Is that enough? Yeah, I think so. But if it's not, guys, I mean, I listened to Mr. Bond speak. We got the property on 112th. We sell it. We put it in solid waste. We do what we gotta do to save these folks, you know. We're in a pandemic. We got 500,000 in the line item for an administration building, which we've already took some money out of that. There's 500 right there to, we got an issue today that we gotta handle. So, there's extra, I'm not saying we need to take those items today and use them to put toward this. I'm saying I've thought it out enough that if my 225 is short, where am I gonna get the difference to cover? You know, if I'm short 100 grand, where's it gonna come from? So, I try to think of places to identify where those funds would come from.
To you, just to clarify, I don't think I have one of these sheets you're going over, but...
Yeah, you should. I passed them down.
I think I passed them all down and I, but maybe you can just help me. Do you have our number from last year roughly, the total number to get rid of our garbage?
It's in that book right there.
Well, I'm saying you run your numbers on what it would be this year, right?
Well, what I did, I didn't, I didn't take, when I sat down with finance, what I did is I took the proposed budget for this year and I worked it backwards. Started taking stuff out. So, I didn't build it, I didn't build a budget off of last year's. I took it from what was proposed and cut it down. That's just the way that I did it. Don't make it right or wrong, but that's just how I did, how I ran my numbers. And I backed into, you know, collections, total budget of 3.661, 3.6 million. And then the disposal budget was two, was it two something? I think I passed out all my, yeah, 3.3 is disposal. So, you, I mean, you got a total, the two departments, six, almost seven million dollars. Now, I'm not saying that this, that this is, that this pro forma budget is ironclad and bulletproof because of the commercial can issue because, well, and then our assessment for ran on 15.5, we know that there's a discrepancy there. So, I ran mine off of 16,685 is the number. And then I adjusted the tipping fee at 65. And I cut everything. There was over a million dollars associated with compacters. Almost 1.1 million dollars was our expense to go to the compacters. I took all that out and trimmed it down as far as I possibly could. But I keep going back to Mr. Bond and his comments because they touched me. And I think that, you know, we do got a spending problem. And we need to, we need to, we need to, and I'm not saying that any department or any individual is responsible for it, but I think that we're asking these folks to pull their belt tight. I think we need to pull ours tight too. I think that we need to put, you know, and I'm not knocking Mr. Harris' admin building. I'm just looking at it as an asset. Do we need it today? I don't think so. Do we have a garbage problem today that is way out of budget? Yeah, we do. So, today, we gotta fix this garbage. And you're looking at probably three days worth of work right here. That don't mean you gotta like it. That don't mean you gotta take it. You could tell me to go pound sand. I'm just one, but that's, that's the best I got, buddy. I know it's a lot to think about. I just threw three days worth of work at you in 15 minutes. But you got any questions, dog?
Well, I heard you talking about the can, the commercial cans. I thought we, I thought we were getting out of that.
Well, my thought process on that was, is if we get out of the can business, we're playing a shell game. We're moving too many shells at one time. So, if we go up on the rates and we lose some cans because our rates are too high, we lose the volume and the tonnage to, to the other company that comes and puts a new can in.
And if, well, just, I heard you say south of 35?
Yes, sir.
Possibly?
Yes, sir.
I know nothing in writing, just a verbal, like a five-year?
Five-year fixed.
Fixed, okay.
Five-year fixed, $135, fixed. No CPI, no increases, five years fixed. They would give us a 10-year agreement to take our garbage. So, for 10 years, they'll take it, they'll fix the price for five.
Only for five?
Just for disposal. Now, we gotta come up with our own transportation. They'll fix the price for five. And just like us and anybody else out here that understands business, the cost of business goes up. So, you're not gonna find a 10-year fix rate from anybody that wants to stay in business. But they'll fix it for five.
I wanted to throw this out there. I can't tell you how popular it's gonna be. But, I mean, there's a lot of information coming in and it's flying at the last minute. And I mean, you've done a lot of research too, but also with the pickup service and, you know, where do we go and what do we do? This isn't gonna be popular with, because we have to find the money from somewhere to make up the difference. Would I have any support on the board if we left the rate where it is for this year and we went back and we studied every avenue? And obviously, if we've done that, we gotta make up the difference. Money has to come from somewhere to pay what this company's charging us to get rid of it. But I'm saying, would there be any support for that? And we spend the next however many months figuring out what we do? Or is that not possible? I'm just asking a question.
And this mayor name may not be popular either, but this is just common sense thinking. The rates stayed at 130 for eight years. If, there's a cost of doing business and there again, who kicked the can? Who did? I don't know. I don't care. But it's here today and we gotta deal with it. I would hope that the public would understand that some type of increase is necessary. I mean, our cost almost doubled. I don't have a problem pulling the funds from anywhere to try to help lower it below the 300. Obviously, I don't, you know, but to stay at 130 for a night here, I mean, private sector, we're going, we're filing for bankruptcy.
Well, I got something here. I don't know if y'all are thinking about this, but if you go to the curbside delivery, I don't know what that price looks like at all, but you can do away with them collection sites at that point.
Yes.
That's a pile of money.
Yes, sir.
That's over a million dollars a year just in them collection sites along just in payroll and what goes on. And so, I'm just wondering what that number looks like curbside without all those collection sites.
That's my point on, do we back up and get all that information?
I mean, I know we gotta deal with what we got in front of us and that's gonna take...
At least for one more year.
Yeah, it's gonna take a year.
I said, at least for one more year, I think is what you're insinuating. We're gonna have to, we know what we got coming. It's our year.
Well, we're already hauling the garbage. I mean, we're already paying now, today. So, I get what we're doing here. I mean, I know we gotta deal with what we got in front of us. We gotta take care of the garbage we're hauling today. But, boy, I'd sure like to look at a lot of those, those other things.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I agree with Commissioner White on that. I think it's absolutely worth exploring what the cost would be from a private sector, third-party company to come in and pick it up at the curb and for us to get out of the collection sites. I think like Mr. Messer said, I mean, it's gonna clean our roads up a little bit. But I didn't have, I did speak to one private sector company two weeks ago. They were extremely interested in doing that for us. We got down to the question, do you got a landfill? Where, and it was, alright, well, let us, we need to back up and pump. Because we don't have a landfill where we can take it anywhere close to there. Could we use your transfer station? I'm like, well, sure. It's like, alright, we need to find a home for the garbage too. So, everybody kinda pumped their brakes, looking for a place to take it. What I, my thought process is, is we go sit down with these folks. I would love to be a part of every piece of communication. I've already started the ball rolling. If y'all would be comfortable, let me be involved in this. I could sit down with the executive director again and with the Harris and Mr. Privat, whoever y'all wanna send, I don't care. Start working out some details to get a better deal. We start looking at hauling it and as soon as we can hammer down a better deal of where to get rid of it, then we start looking at right behind it, collections versus curb, collection versus curb. I mean, I just think of the landfill issue and start our own maybe. I mean, that we've already discussed, if we start a landfill in Swanee County, it's five years for a piece of garbage goes in, if you started it today. I mean, that's what the consultants told us. So, and you're talking about millions of dollars. So, that's a generational decision. That's a big investment, I think, long-term. That's why you see these counties partnering up. These smaller counties are all partnering up and getting into landfill business because long-term, we're getting away from the private sector. They realize long-term, you need to control your destination. And the only way to do that, or destiny only do that is to be owner.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just on some of the comments he made there about possibly our own landfill, just for public discussion, just knowledge. I mean, we've discussed so many things here. We discussed this group, starting our own landfill, trying to find someone else like Commissioner Land has. I've reached out to some of the other counties that have, that have partnered as well. Also, after our last meeting, talking about landfill and creating our own landfill and what that entails, I just happened to have a conversation with one of the commissioners from Columbia County and I asked him, would he entertain asking his board, I think the gentleman told us it would take two to three years to build, would they take our trash, our solid waste for two to three years? And he's gonna ask, he's gonna, I haven't got an answer. That was just a few days ago. But I mean, we have some options, as you say, Mr. Land. But the hard part is, what are we gonna do tonight? I mean, that's the hard part. We got a lot of great discussion and we got a lot of great ideas, but this is the roadblock here.
Commissioner Fleming, pull it closer, pull it closer.
I don't really disagree with what everybody's saying, but Mr. Messler left, stated that Columbia County had a curbside service, but also they have a landfill and that didn't carry some of the carts. When Mr. Locklear talked to us a week or so ago, he did state that, that we're talking about a landfill. And those cells, can you hear me?
You gotta talk straight into it.
Okay. Well, anyway, he was saying about the five years probably that we would have in, in one of those cells. I think he was here tonight. I don't know whether Mr. Harris is gonna ask him to come and say some things concerning what we're dealing with. We're dealing with an issue that is just gonna incur, it's gonna go over and over. Now, we did go to Columbia County. If Columbia County were taking some of our garbage or taking our garbage, one day they're gonna run out and then we're gonna still be stuck with the situation. I listen to this and well, we can go to, but I know it's hard for us to start our own landfill and to get it done and getting it going. And we're a year out or two years out or however many years we're out. I feel as if we go with someone else, we may be backing ourselves up, backing ourselves in a corner. That's just how I feel and I, my preference is letting it stay with that.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask, you wanna stay with, you wanna stay with waste management?
Well, what I'm implying is that we want to, I feel like we'd be better situated where we at.
Okay. With all due respect, I disagree. I think that we can go out and we can find a better deal within the next two months to handle the garbage now. And that I do agree that we need to start working toward controlling our own destiny. But in the short run, I mean, if we can save $350,000 a year with a new company and hauling ourselves, I'm all about saving 350.
My response, I think, would be, I appreciate all the information you've done. I appreciate the idea of coming in with a lower rate and I support that. But here's the problem I got that I can't do. And anybody in this room can look back at our meetings and see the meeting we had at City Hall and how long it lasted and all the discussion and we crunched numbers and left there with that number and felt decent about it. But the landscape has changed so much since then, far as the information that's come in, far as people coming with ideas that's gave us ideas from outside, from, you know, check on this or check on this and see if this works. Well, the problem is now, we got a lot of great ideas. And I would be in support of what you're proposing far as lowering the, lowering the rate. But here's a situation that I'm not in support of and that is, okay, so we set the rate at 225 and we had a vote and it passed. And we go do, we go figure out where we're going in the world over the next six months and we get a strategic game plan of this is what we're gonna do. Well, then we're gonna circle around and come back to the people and tell them we're gonna need more money. And I'm, I'm just not, I don't, I wanna tell the people one time, this is what we need. That's, you know, I just, I don't want them, I don't want the folks to leave here tonight, okay? Well, we feel like, we feel better about it because it was less than the 300. But next year, there's gonna be a letter in the mail. I mean, do you...
No, I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. I don't, I do not disagree and I've thought about that. But my, I processed it a little bit differently. Don't make it right, don't make it wrong. But my thought process was, alright, does anybody like 150? No. Does anybody like 300? Heck no. Well, if I can get it to 200, 225 this year, going through a pandemic with a lot of people that are hurting financially, but I plant the seed that, hey, we, our backs are against the wall. We're not, we're not gonna go up to the 300. We're gonna go less than that. But next year, we may incur some expenses on trying to start building our own landfill. We may, we're gonna explore some other opportunities, curbside pickup. We may introduce curbside pickup and get rid of the collection sites, but we're $2 million short. And we go to curbside. So, to pay whoever, green garbage company to come in here and pick it up at the curb, we're gonna have to go up another 50 bucks. You know, my thought process is, a little bit of the increase is catching up from what was, what hasn't been done. And the rest of it is trying to get us up, back to a break even on the deal we got here. But I would hope that the public would understand that if we go to a number less than 300, that they know that we're doing everything we can to keep it as low as we possibly can. But there's a good chance that it's gonna be higher again next year. But we're not gonna hit them all at one time with 300. And that doesn't make my thinking right. That's just how I processed it. That's it.
I just... I'll add to that. I agree, there's gotta be an increase at some point in time. I just don't know when that is. It's back to the roadblock I'm talking about. But, just thinking there. What did you say, Commissioner Land, 225?
I ran those numbers at 225.
And we all know, in the gentleman's vote, that Columbia County's at 226 for curbside. But, now, they own and operate their own.
They own and operate their own landfill, so they're not paying the $57 a ton.
So, I don't even... Some of those numbers and the less amount we have, I don't know that we could even do it for that. I'm just thinking out loud off of the numbers.
It's gonna be tight. I mean, it's gonna be tight. But, we have a balance forward, that I was gonna use as a balance forward. And I got $250,000 coming in from the general for each apartment to help alleviate some of that. And then, again, if the 225 fell short, I identified to sell the property on 112 and use some of those proceeds to take the 500 from the administration bill in escrow line. Those are just two, and if nobody likes those two lines, I'll look for some more.
I would tell them. I'm just looking long-term.
I mean, it's gonna be tight, but, you know, a lot of these people sitting out here got their belts pulled pretty tight, too.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just go over here. I'm sorry. I know it's hard to figure out where the sound's coming from, back going off the law. I just... I do wanna point out that the rate that we are currently spending in this fiscal year, when we negotiated with Waste Management on that, that number is going to carry through till this time next year. And it's... The disposal piece of that is $28 a ton, and that does not include transportation. So, it's $28 a ton right now with Waste Management that'll take us to this time next year. And I agree with all of you, sir. But, we gotta make some kind of decision. I don't know what decision it's gonna be. And there are just... There are a lot of variables. Trying to go up on the rates for the commercial haulers is definitely gonna be a... And for the lease camps, there's some uncertainty there. I don't have any idea how that's gonna fall out. No idea whatsoever. But, so, from the standpoint of cost, if we go make a deal with a government-owned facility and we can get it down to $28 a ton, that's where we are right now. I think that'd be a great deal, especially if we could lock it in for 10 years.
I disagree with you. I disagree with you. You... Right here in your numbers, you... Your numbers are, we can haul it to Chester Island, Georgia for $17.71 a ton. That's $10 cheaper than what we're paying a private sector to haul it right now. So, if we can do it $10 a cheaper ton to Chester Island, surely we can do it $13, $14 cheaper a ton to a site that's round-trip 70 miles closer. So, I understand that it's $28.71. I'm not saying that we're gonna go into an agreement with those guys tomorrow, but I say that we... 33 fixed for five is better than $38.71 in year five with Waste Management.
I don't disagree with you in year five.
So, you're gonna say...
Year one.
On your... Year one, $28.71 a ton. I'm not saying we vacate it today, because it's gonna take some time to iron out a new contract. I mean, the board over there doesn't meet until sometime in October. So, you're talking end of the year before we'd actually have an agreement in place to start taking it to any new location. But, $28.71 and 27, do the math. You get 33 fixed, and he's already said we can haul it for 71, or $17.71. So, if we can haul it to Chester Island for $17.71, surely we can haul it somewhere that's 35 miles closer one way for 15. Well, 15 and 33, do the math. What's that? Eight and 48? That's better than what we're paying now. I mean, I think you need to realize the savings on the transportation, too. You can't just look at a disposal rate. You gotta look at the whole thing. And I think that you're leaving... You're missing, I think, respectfully, I think you're missing the boat on what we can save.
No, I absolutely think we have to haul it ourselves regardless of where we go. My point was, though, that we had one year. We had till this time next year. Because I guarantee you, the numbers would be higher than anything that we could do over there by time, at least before we got to the end of year two.
We can't terminate... We can't terminate the agreement anyway, so we're not gonna get out of it. We're gonna continue to haul, do business as usual, until there's another option for us. So, there's no termination clause in the Waste Management contract. I'm ready. Mr. Pravat? That's correct. So, we're not terminating the contract with Waste Management. There is no, you know, there's no requirements in the contract, but there is no termination clause.
Yeah, there's no minimum or maximum in there.
Correct. So, you leave it in place. You haul it over there until you can find a better deal, which I think I have found. I think I found, and we go that route.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Fleming.
Are you saying that we currently, the way we're currently at, or do the increase, we're good and connected?
The rate that we currently have in this year is the same rate that we would have till this time next year. And if we can negotiate something better than that someplace else, that'd be great. By the time you get into... You start going into the second and third year of this contract, though, your disposal rate's going up in the Waste Management contract. Let me just say, regardless of what we do, we need to be hauling it ourselves, regardless. So, by the time you get into these other years, though, the rates are definitely gonna be up higher if we don't do something different. Does anyone else on the board have anything to say at this time? I'm gonna have some...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page here. Mr. Land, you've got the disposal rate here at $3.3 million. Is that... Am I reading this right?
Yes, yes, sir.
That's what it's gonna cost us to do that, and then $3.6 million is collection.
Yes, sir.
And that's taken out... The compactors, the site prep for all of that.
Increasing the tonnage on the commercial cans from $46.88 a ton to $65 a ton and using $16,695. And that number's gonna move a little bit based on the finalization of tax rolls. I mean, it could go up a little bit, it could come down a little bit. But, those are the numbers I used to generate the revenue based on assessment. I mean, I don't disagree with Mr. Harris. In the short run, it's better to stay where we're at. But, about nine months to 12 months from now, we're gonna be wishing we had a better deal. And I think it's gonna take us six months to iron one out. And if you iron one out with no minimum tonnage requirements, with the new place, new destination, just like we have in our current contract, split it 50/50 into the numbers lineup. You know, at least you got a... At least Plan B's in place for year three, year four, year five, when that number gets to the $50 mark, and you're gonna be sitting here at 48.
Yeah. All right. All right, gentlemen. I feel like you've had... We've had a discussion. So, at this time, I wanna open the Florida Public Comment, and we're gonna let the folks come up here and have a say. I got a list here, so I'm gonna... Let me just go down my list. Everyone, just please sit down, and as you sign in, I'll go down the list. And if you're not on the list, I'll go to the next one. Ms. Fairchild. Ms. Graham. Mr. Haas. I have a long list here, so I would ask everybody to please be clear with your comments. We completely understand and feel you, and we try to keep it to about three minutes, and that way, everybody can have a chance to speak.
Paul Haas, you got my address before in McAllen, Florida. Mr. Land, I wanna commend you. I mean, I'm a fifth-generation Swann County, and like Mr. Mercer, my family's been in Florida before Florida State. But, I've seen a lot of commissioners, been in a lot of commission meetings, a lot of town council meetings. I think you went above and beyond. Here goes the problem. You talk about stats. How much money does Mr. Harris make a year? Mr. Harris, how much, public record, how much you make a year?
I believe it's $130,000.
If we can save $130,000 right there by firing the public, it'd be a good job. I don't take this lightly. There's a lot more going on than just the waste issue. The bid process was a joke. We got one bid, and there's seven companies out there. Don't know how hard it works. He works at the discretion of you five gentlemen. You five gentlemen could make this county better by firing that man up there today, tonight. But, I'll leave it at that. You ought to be careful.
Ms... Do I have a Ms. Building? Uh, Mr. Clepper.
I'll pass for now.
Okay. Ms. Jennifer Brown.
No, really? Help? Chill the mail, please. I hate to tell you all this. My name's Jennifer Brown. I've got 25 years in trucking. I'm forcibly retired from driving. Now, you guys wanna do self-haul? You wanna save some money, right? How much do you need to save this year? How much do you need to save these people? How much money?
Couple million.
Couple million? All right. Give you an idea. Y'all wanna drive? Y'all wanna own a truck? Do not buy it for five years. Do it for three. Reason why I say this. After-treatment systems on these trucks, and I know because my husband owns them, costs $40,000 in maintenance in two months. And you can't get parts on these new trucks. So, if you're gonna do this, lease them or buy them for three years, get the full warranty on them. Your rates, y'all are paying way too much. Do you know how much it costs to haul a load of 25 tons from about Austin to live up here at Pilgrim's Pride? One to take the asset, 64 miles, one way. $9.25. Now, y'all are hauling, what, 30-some more miles? And you're getting 70 something a ton?
No, 27.
Okay, 27. You're getting raped. Now, here's another thought. All right, if you guys, Swan County, you say a municipality has to pay for the landfill, correct, to go into the landfill? Have you heard of subcontracting people in this county that are quite able and willing, likes to stand insured for a lot less money than you buying a truck and trailers? There's plenty of owner-operators in this county that would do that, even at about $17 a ton. You don't have the overhead. You don't have the maintenance. You don't have to pay an employee to do it because the company handles it. Now, I got solutions that long when it comes to that. I can help you out in ways you never dreamed of. You just got your coffee. Now, as far as bids going out, I can tell you, I know several people that never received a bid, never even heard of it. Probably be very happy to haul the trash from point A to point B. And yes, you're gonna need at least three trucks. How do I know this? Because I used to haul the trash from here for another company. And I can tell you, paying a driver body out ain't gonna cut it. You wanna know why? Because you're gonna sit under a damn shade tree. I'm sorry to say that, but that's the way it works. You got an expensive piece of equipment, and they're piled up under the shade tree instead of doing their job. Truck drivers, we're the backbone of society. We have to work, make ends meet. We don't get rich. Most often, we just barely stay in the black. But, there's a lot of people in this community, if you guys would ask, that can help you guys. You wanna save millions? Ask a business owner that is successful, has been in business a long time. My husband has been in business for quite some time. He's dedicated. He has a nice reputation. But, the point being, guys, y'all have resources. Y'all haven't even tapped yet. Now, if you need help with numbers, and I can tell you, what y'all got in here for tractor expense, trailer expense, you talk about walking floors, you got to have wet lines on them, you got to pull a truck out. Do you have any other tractors available, a driver that is available to do that? I mean, you got to have contingencies if you're gonna meet that demand. Otherwise, the trash is gonna back up, and you're gonna have a bunch of pissed-off people. I'm serious. Y'all want help? Call people. Now, I'd be willing to sit down with you any day of the week. I can give you a list of federal regulations right on down. I can spec a truck, too, and a freezer. And I'm damn good at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill Ditter. Welcome, sir. Just name and address for the record.
My name is William R. Ditter, 16218, 115th Road in McAllen. Okay, I wanna address a little bit of what Ricky had to say a while ago on travel trailers. I have a travel trailer. I bought it in 2003. In 2014, evidently, somebody came by and decided that I had it plugged in there, or somebody had to be living in it. And I have been charged double fire and double trash ever since then. Because when I get my bill, all it is is fire and garbage. It doesn't tell you how many dwellings you've got. Nobody bothered to say that they were changing my RV that is not for somebody to live in to a residence. Now, evidently, people say, "Well, why do you keep it plugged in?" Well, it keeps the battery charged, number one. Number two, how many of you have ever cleaned out a refrigerator that's been shut off for two or three weeks or a month? And sitting there, it cost me $3.60 a month to run that refrigerator. Electricity's I'm paying for on land that I own. Nobody living in it. But, I'm being billed for it. Now, there's another thing that you can look at when people are staying in a camper. I do realize that people do that. Well, you got electricity. Well, water. Well, maybe the water's a bit down. Now, it's your house. I can't see your sewer connection. But, if you pull up in my driveway and you walk out to my camper, you can see that black pipe with a cap on it because it's a foot off the ground. Now, anybody here wanna live in a camping trailer that you have to move to dump, or you've got to figure some way to get it to a dumping station? Because most people in their backyards don't have one. But, I've been being charged now for six years by Swan County. And I think that's just a little bit much. And now, I see that I would be charged $600 a month for this upcoming year for garbage. Now, most of the garbage I manage to take care of on my own property. I may take one or two bags every other week out there. And I never take yard trash. But, I think we need to make some changes in the way... And I've talked to people from the Tax Collector's Office. They're not cooperating with me too much, but whatever. I've talked to Ricky Gamble. I talked to someone at the Administrator's Office. Not getting very far. But, maybe we can get this thing ironed out and get it changed. One of... Some of the people at the Tax Collector's Office said I need to bring it up to this... board because they make the rules. Well, I think you need to relook at your rules. Just because something's plugged in does not mean somebody's living in it.
Yes. Thank you for your comments. Welcome, sir. Just name and address for the record.
Sure, no problem. Phil Royce, 13366, Canter Road 136, right by the hospital. I just ran the numbers, the statistics for 2020. I think you guys are really getting screwed with waste management because, uh, it says...
Oh, sorry.
It says, uh, 54, you guys are getting charged 59, or you're being quoted 59. The average is 54 per ton. Um, I don't know where I put that note, but I was just pulling the census statistics for waste management. So, I think it's a little bit higher than what, uh, what it really should be by the quote. I'm also getting charged, or I should say, my wife is getting charged on one of our properties, we have more than one in this county, uh, for property, for dwellings that don't exist on property. So, we're getting double or triple taxing on there, which now that I've heard what the tax collector had to say about that, we're gonna correct some of that issue. I do think you guys need to look at other options. As a state certified contracts manager, and knowing that if you have over $35,000 bid, you have to have two quotes, and you only got one from waste management, you guys need to look more and give more opportunity out there. I don't think that's fair to not only our county, but to the people behind me here.
Yes, sir.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comment.
I can't read the last name, but the first name's Dean. I apologize, sir.
Yes, I'm Dean Smahill. I'm 16125 30th Street, Live Oak. I was up earlier. Um, first, I'd like to thank Miss Land for coming up with some proposals that sound more reasonable. However, it would've been nice if it had all been shared with the rest of you a little bit earlier, maybe because of time.
Do the sunshine, though. I can't talk to those guys outside of public meetings, so, yeah.
Just try to, sir, try to get close to the microphone where everybody can hear you.
But anyhow, I mean, I thought the discussion was very good, but it would've been nice to be able to really review that kind of stuff so that everybody understood what it all meant, and we could've probably come up with a resolution for tonight. If you ask me right now, I think really you need to go back and review numbers before you come up with any of these, um, proposed charges that you wanna make. I mean, right now, my wife and I are the only two people living in the house. I go to the dump twice a month, so it's basically costing me about $5.5 each time I go to the dump. Uh, with your proposal to go to 300, now you're talking about 12, 12 and a half dollars to go to the dump. And if you go up to your maximum here, uh, we're now looking at $20.5. My wife and I don't make a lot of garbage, and that seems to be a little bit outrageous. So, I really would love to see a better proposal than what you're proposing here, because we are retired and we are on fixed income, and many other people I know, you know, Live Oak are on fixed income. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome, sir. Just name and address for your record.
John Gwynn, 13775 100 Terrace Lot.
Thank you.
So, I'd like you to look at this in a larger than just the fire and the solid waste issue because taxes are going up everywhere. Uh, and also the swing that the letters have with regard to what you're planning to charge versus what you may charge in the future, those, those are pretty big swings too. So, with the solid waste, you're proposing a 130% increase is what's on that letter. Uh, and it, you can, without any further notice, because that is what it says in your letter, uh, increase the solid waste to what would be 279% of what it is now. That seems outrageous. Uh, you know, the fire, I could see a 20% increase. I think that's, that's modest. From my personal perspective, I think that's acceptable. The max rate that you could increase it is 236%. That's a lot of money. Uh, the taxes on the properties are going up as well. Uh, I've got a 30-acre plot that I've got in, uh, split into three sections. I've got a house on one and a mobile home on the other. Um, and the taxes on the house went up 16.5%. The taxes on the mobile home went up 11.2%. And I don't know how a mobile home increases in value. Typically, they all decrease. So, for between the last year and this year, I'm looking at anywhere from overall tax rate, uh, increase of 16.5% to 43.7%. That, that's what I'm looking at, just the delta between last year and this year. That's a lot of money. So, I think that, and based on what I've heard here, the homework isn't complete yet with regard to solid waste. So, I'd like you to see, you know, you guys communicate a little better. Surprisingly, you're not allowed to communicate outside these meetings. But I think you need to do more homework, come up with some better ideas, and look at the overall tax situation in this county. And look at the people that are paying the bills, and it's a tough time right now, and I think you can do better with the amount of tax increases that you're putting on the people.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Paul Fortner. Ruben Ortiz.
This is a court, so I can run on it, right? So, I haven't seen many of you guys lately, but I appreciate your hospitality and letting everybody come in here in the air condition instead of sitting outside of the other place. So, you know, a lot of people get up here and they throw stones at you, and I, you know, as a small fraction of the population, you occupy those seats, I've occupied those seats, so you were in a small group of alumnus, you know, at this point in time. So, it gives me a unique understanding, so that's the reason I wanted to talk to you today. But I'm not gonna waste your time, because it looks like you have a workable solution. I was just gonna offer solutions to you from my perspective. Having said that, a lot of people wanna tell you what bad job you're doing, and this is good for Mr. Bravat, Mr. Harris, and the balance of the board here, you have done some good things. I've heard some people come up here and, in meetings, because I watch you on YouTube, you don't get enough use to make any money on it, but I encourage you to continue to put 'em on there. Maybe one day you will, okay? Um, I watch it, and, you know, you had somebody come up here in one meeting and was lambasting you because your equipment was too nice. Well, me and my board, we started that process of restoring equipment when a, when one of our employees would go out and get on a piece of equipment, they'd turn the, the thing, it wouldn't start. I was privy to a situation where we were in an EMS station and they needed to, to take off to do a call. I got in the truck, turned it on, the key wouldn't start. So, I knew there was a problem. So, we began to look at remedies and solutions to that, and we went to the leasing program. I was watching a meeting the other day, and you guys were questioning the leasing program, and I was like, oh, don't do that. You know, let's, let's keep doing that so that we can have a man in a truck and he can get in it and go to work. And we increased production when it came to Lime Rock and stuff like that, so I'm glad you guys are continuing to do that. The other thing I wanna say is thank you for bringing home the bacon to Swanee County. I know you guys are really active in Tallahassee, Mr. Harris, the rest of you commissioners. I know I talk to Don Hale a lot, he's my commissioner. Um, and I just wanna thank you for bringing home the bacon to us, the money that would otherwise go to other counties, so thank you for that. On this particular thing, I think you bit off more than you could chew. The reason I say so is the four years I was in office, we never packed around like this. We knew better. And so, shame on you for that. Shame on you for, for, for that, okay? Mr. Harris is well aware of that, that's his, his modus operandi, that's what they did in, in the county he came from. Uh, you make big moves, bold moves. You know Reagan said, paint with broad strokes and brilliant colors. Not the way to do that in Swanee, okay? So, just let it be a lesson to you, okay? And, and you know what? We got time. The trash is still moving. The trash is still moving today. I went by a collection site today, it's not overflowing outside of the things, transfer station, I'm sure, is not backed up. Uh, things are happening. The way things get done with staff and the government, whether it's the federal level or state level, is we create a crisis. And then we say, we gotta do something, we gotta do something right now. And so, that's what you've got, that's what you've been put into. And I encourage you to be a little bit more smart about that with your staff and some of those things. Don't react. Mr. Powell got up here a few weeks ago or a couple of months ago and told you how flush with cash you were, like $14 million, unreserved money sitting there, okay? Is that correct? Nod your head, right? $14 million sitting there, unencumbered money. So, we don't have to react. You can leave it the way it is this year, and then we'll address it through the next six months, and we'll work through it. I stand with Mr. Land. I thought you were a troublemaker at the binning, but I'm kinda coming to like you. So, I appreciate you very much, and the rest of you, appreciate your efforts, everybody here. Uh, I see a lot of people here as seasoned citizens, we appreciate you guys sticking around and, and coming up here and offering your opinion, but it sounds like we have a workable solution, so it took a little bit too much time. Appreciate you. Thank you very much. Hope to see you in the next six months, okay?
Well, thank you, sir.
I know he's already left to go home to cook, but I can't not mention his name because it's on here, Mr. Floyd Messer. He made clear. Give us something to think about, and I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Meso Martin. The first name is Ren. Mike Cleary. Alan Mosier.
My name is James Winstead. I live at 21320 126 Place. The profit of garbage fees, I'm a single person. I take off maybe two bags of garbage every two weeks. The $300 fees is absorbent, you know? I don't, have no way that I can use that kind of garbage.
Yes, sir.
And then, the $600 fee that it can go to is just outrageous. I don't see no way it can go that way. Can't, can't afford to pay it.
Yes, sir. DeMarco is the last name?
There she is, Mr. DeMarco from the last meeting.
I left y'all some papers.
Yes, ma'am. Just name and address again for the record.
Alita DeMarco, 7050 213th Road, Live Oak. Gentlemen, I thank you for all your time. Uh, Mr. Land, I thank you very much for your extra efforts. And because I've already said a lot to you folks, people that are here listening have not heard, um, in the meeting that the board held on the second, I was fortunate to be there, and I did hear some of this information. And I found that the gentlemen had not done all of their homework. Before I sent you a letter, August 26th, I had done mine. And I knew who, uh, Waste Management was. I knew about Wayne Heisinga, I knew their bad reputation. And I also knew that in 2019, that they had started a purchase of advanced disposal out of Quanah Verde. And that was completed in 2020 in June, excuse me, in October, uh, because the DOJ held them up and forced them to do some, uh, selling of some of their assets because of antitrust. Waste Management was number one hauler in the country, and they bought number five hauler. They are now in a position to be in monopoly. They took and had to dispose of some of their assets. Their assets are the contracts from each of our counties. That gives them a higher bottom line to get government grants to run their business. I gave you all pages that I had already looked up and had already read. I told you in the last meeting, I have been through all of this in both Dade and Palm Beach counties. I've heard all the same things. I've seen the same things with Wayne Heisinga's company when he built it. I know that they were up on fraud charges with Arthur Andersen, uh, which was a huge accounting firm, and they were charged $600 million for padding their books from the 70s, 80s, and 90s. So, big waste is dirty in every aspect. They are passing on their losses and their selling of their assets to GFL in order to purchase, uh, the other hauling company to the small counties in order to maintain their ability to get grants. We are paying taxes to have our waste hauled. And then we are paying taxes, which is being given to those companies to run their landfills, their incinerators, and the recycling. Recycling is very well and doing well. Big management greases the palms of local, state, and federal employees and management and engineers, and we get the front of it. This county is small. There are grants, and I talked about that, but y'all just don't seem to be hearing me. Um, I, I don't understand, why does this have to come out of our pockets when we've already paid the government? We've already paid taxes every which way. And there are grants. You don't have a grant writer who is specialized in solid waste, hire one offline that has a history of getting grants. Once you have the keys and you're already in getting the grants, you'll get more. There are newer grants even than when I was involved for everything, from composting for community food to you name it, you name it, the hauling and everything. I gave you a list. Certainly, somebody should be able to hire grant writers to help dispel some of this cost. And when you're talking about reclaiming our landfill, that's called mining, which I'm sure you all know, but maybe the rest of us out here don't. There are grants specifically for that. Your engineer stood up and said that you're gonna be able to do different things with reclaiming that landfill and getting down to the bottom and put your liners in. Big waste is who has paid to have all of those regulations to keep small counties from competing with them. Go to the website, islr.org. All of the history of waste is there. Waste 360 is all about the recycling. It's there. For us to be facing this when we have a surplus in the county is, is beyond comprehension. I'm angry, everybody here is angry. One gentleman stood up and said someone should lose their jobs. Would y'all like to contribute your salaries towards our fees? Because y'all knew in May about this, but we didn't. And then you notified us two months before. And in that letter that you've sent us, you have given yourselves the opportunity to charge us without us having anything to say about it. I know that's already been brought up. I know that's already been brought up. But in the state of Florida, if I'm correct, what is written and accepted is law. Am I correct, sir? So if it wasn't written that way, we probably wouldn't be as upset that you had given yourselves the right to charge us another huge amount. We're already upset. And there are so many people in this county. You're saying that we're getting all these hundreds of people moving every month? I haven't seen them all. I could be wrong. But the grant, one of them that I was talking to you about, is available to every county under 110 residents annually. Every county is eligible. And that covers all kinds of costs that you're talking about paying for your engineers, your legal fees, all of these things that you need done. There are other grants that we are eligible for because we are a small county. And like I said before, I suggest that you handle getting our own landfill back up and running before you have to face this issue with millions of us instead of only forty-five thousand. Thank you, gentlemen, and I look forward to a better resolution than what you have given us.
At this time, that was all that's on my list. Do I have anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. I'll just, Mr. Cameron, we'll start with you right here in the front. We'll work our way through.
Tony Cameron, 11212177th Road. I don't know why I'm not on the list, because I signed it. I printed my name where you can read it legibly.
I think maybe he was on, we have two lists. I think you signed the fire list.
Okay.
But you signed.
All right. But anyway, we are a small rural county. And in this situation, I think we have to crawl before we can walk. We can't just jump out here and increase these fees on everyone. Because there, you know, there are people in this room that can pay those fees and not even really, really realize it. But there are so many people in this county, especially a lot of older people, who are living on not just a fixed income, but social security, just social security, not any retirements or anything like that. You've got those folks that just can't afford to jump from one fifty to three hundred overnight. And then you have people, these young people in Swan County, we're trying to get them to come back here and stay here. Well, they come and buy a new house here, and they barely can pay their house payments and their car payments because we don't have a really high salary base here in Swan County. And those young people, now they get that new bill, and it just keeps going up. And I know that the cost of doing business goes up. I realize that. Being the sheriff here for twelve years, I ask for increases. And you have to do certain things. You have to have certain things. You have to have fire. You have to have rescue. You have to have sheriff's office. You have to have law enforcement. You know, you just have to do those things. And you have to pay a price to do those. But there are ways to tighten belts and tighten budgets. You know, I talked to my wife just the other day about, we had two kids in college at the same time. And I had to tighten my belt up pretty good at times when tuition was due and those kind of things, and when you had to pay the fee for the dorm for the next five months. You know, all of those things fall into place. But we tightened our belt, and we didn't go do the things we wanted to do. And in this situation, I think the whole county's going to have to tighten their belt, not just the taxpayer. And whenever you tighten the belt of the county, that's what your job's going to have to be, is to tighten the county's belt. And I know that some of the things that Mr. Land brought up, there are avenues that need to be explored and looked at strongly. There's a lot of things, ideas that I've heard that could be good ideas. It could work out. You know, we don't know which ones will. But in the meantime, I'm just asking you not to jump up to three hundred dollars automatic, but pick a lower number down there and get, you know, get where people can basically afford a small increase. And then this clause in there where it could go up to four hundred and ninety-three dollars without sending out notices again, that doesn't need to happen. It doesn't need to be able to go up like that. It needs to figure out exactly what you've got to have and exactly what you want to do. And then come back and say, "This is the best we can come up with." But right now, there's too many options. And I just ask that, you know, well, we talked about reserves, money in reserves and those kind of things. For this one, for a six-month period or a year period or whatever, the increase could be handled out of reserves just to get by until we come up with the exact plan of what we can do to help the taxpayer of this county. Because these folks out here really need a lot of, a lot of help from you. And I just ask that you man up and do your best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Hi, my name is John Burnham. I have a petition that I-
Address, go quick. Address.
Oh, 16149198 Trail, O'Brien, Florida. I have a petition that I did online. Got about over five hundred signatures. I can leave that with your clerk or with you guys afterward. But, and they're all against the current proposed tax increase or assessment.
Yes, sir.
So I just wanted to put that out there. As far as what Mr. White had said about local pickup at your curb, and Mr. Land said about the, you know, other options other than Waste Management, I think that's great way of looking at different ideas, and I think we need to take our time and look this whole thing over again, step back from, you know, and look at all the different options and reway what we've got here and see what the best option is. Because currently, as your current proposal, three hundred dollars is unreasonable, it's too much. And like everybody else here, like previous guy said, it's going to be hard on a lot of people, and we can do better.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Office staff is right here. Ma'am in the center, or, sorry, you're fine.
Sorry, it's rolled up. I can provide it to you digitally if-
You're fine.
My name's George White. My address is, I wrote it down so I wouldn't mix it up, 18869165th Place, O'Brien, Florida. I've found our commissioners to be receptive. I've called a few. Somebody was nice enough to put in the Riverbend News a list of the commissioners with their phone numbers. And when I called, the ones that were able to answer spoke briefly to Mr. White, tried Mr. Hale, and me and Travis Land spoke at length, and me and Lynn Stapleton. And I was pleasantly surprised that at the state level, I seldom get people to listen. They say, "Okay, we'll pass that along." That's it. At the local level, I found they were actually asking questions and interested in, you know, the ideas I presented. But one thing I hadn't heard it mentioned tonight is, I know for right now, we're kind of locked into the system we're locked into. If we're going to keep the collection sites, the curb, curb collection might work, but if we're going to keep the collection centers, it should be a user-fee-based system. Because for, I've heard a couple, I've heard a couple of the speakers say they make two bags of trash every two weeks or something. Somebody else might bring in ten bags every day, and for us to pay the same rate isn't fair. And Mr. Stapleton, I believe, in the, one of the Riverbend News articles said about how people out of county come to our county and dump their trash. Well, they don't pay anything, but if every time you dump a bag of trash, you pay. Either pay by the bag, pay by weight, there's ways to average that out and find what it costs per bag or per pound, then it's a fair system. And I'm probably preaching to the choir right now because I believe everybody here is probably a property owner is why we showed up. But right now, the people that aren't property owners, they don't have to pay. They bring their trash, and you know, maybe they're renters, maybe they're from out of county. I'm guilty. I brought my mom's trash from Columbia County to the center. I didn't pay for, you know, my mom didn't pay for that. But to just charge the property owners, that's not a fair system if we're going to stick with the collection centers. It should be a user-fee-based system where when you bring your trash, you pay. And some people would say, "Oh, no, if we don't get to pay, if we don't get free trash, we're going to throw it in the woods," or "We're going to just pile it up in our yard." Well, guess what? It's not free right now. And a couple of the previous speakers, they broke it down, what they're paying per bag. But right now, there's no incentive to make less trash. If you make ten bags, or if you make, the lady that spoke up about the corruption at Waste Management, she mentioned community-based compost, that stuff works. It's a little bit of a hassle maybe to get it implemented, but compost is as easily, it's as easy as tossing a banana peel on the ground in your yard instead of putting it in the trash to stink up the trash and, you know, have more weight. But right now, there's no incentive to minimize your own trash. And tighten your belt, that's okay once in a while, but it's way overused. Everybody wants to tell everybody to tighten their belt. If you really want to tighten your belt, you generate less trash. Every, every single person here can make less trash. And if you only pay and buy the bag, by the volume, by the pound, whatever, you're going to have an incentive to. But right now, if it's basically the free thing that every, that's a myth, it's never free. If it's free thing, nobody's going to tighten that belt. People are still going to make truckloads of trash, and I have it thrown all over the highway on the way to the landfill. And if we got curbside pickup too, that trash can end up by the road, road that way too. But if the user-based system, it's kind of idiot-proof, kind of pretty simple and cut and dry, you pay it, you make it. It's like, I pay for the hamburgers I eat. I don't want to pay for the hamburgers you eat. I mean, it's pretty, pretty simple and cut and dry. And I don't have the information in front of me, but Mr. Land or somebody that's ambitious could look it up. There are studies out there where they break down the composition of garbage. There's so much percentage that's rubber, so much that's plastic, and that sounds like, "Oh, that's a hassle, don't look into it." But if you know you're going to have, say, twenty percent of it steel, you look at the market for how to, how to, uh, get that steel to a profitable. It's either an asset or a liability, everything. The definition of a weed is a plant in their own place. Well, the definition of trash is something one person doesn't want. But what's trash to one person is treasure to another. It's an old cliche. So if you don't, if the metal's only going, if the metal drops down to three cent a pound, then it's not an asset for y'all to haul it, even if it's in the separate bin. But right now, the trash at these collection centers, it's like Fort Knox. Oh, if it's in the dumpster, nobody can touch it. That's ludicrous. The residents should be able to take whatever they want because at sixty cent, sixty cent a ton, sixty dollars a ton, excuse me, that's three cent a pound. So every time somebody takes something that's three cent a pound home with them, that's, we didn't have to pay for that. The county didn't, the residents did. So we need to have a free-flow system where trash can go in and trash can go out. And if it goes out in a residence vehicle, that's a win-win for everybody. Union County, Alachua County, some of the other counties, they have a durable structure, a canopy, where if you don't want a couch or a child's toy or a piece of lawn furniture, you put it there, a box of books, whatever, people are able to get it. We lower the volume because we're not going to overnight build a landfill. We're here in five years. That, and with a landfill, you're also, also going to have what they call NIMBY, not in my backyard. People are going to not want the landfill near them. But, you know, that's neither here nor there. Right now, we got the trash right now we're dealing with. Overnight, I'm talking as soon as tomorrow, you could have a canopy at those collection centers. People can put stuff they don't want. It can go out. You break it down item by item. Don't look at it as one big problem of garbage. Look at it as the components of the trash. And we get tunnel vision, we've done everything the same way for so many years, but there's so many other solutions. But bottom line, the three Rs, reduce, reuse, recycle, common sense, measure by measure. And the other thing is the user-based fees. And I agree with the lady that was the truck driver and then the lady that looked into the corruption at Waste Management. You have a lot of resources here. And we're kind of locked in that we can only, you know, people with degrees and that charge consultant fees. Well, a lot of the residents, it's a free resource. If we avail ourselves to you and you don't use us, it's your own fault. But I appreciate what you're doing. I wouldn't want your job if I made double what you made. I wouldn't want your job. God bless you. Thanks for that.
Thank you, sir. I got three right here. You're fine. Come on. Name and address, please.
Jan Tiffany.
Close to the mic.
Jan Tiffany, 14814135th Place, Live Oak.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Land, I spoke to you on the phone at one point, and I sent you a letter. Having listened to all these other people, especially this man that's saying pay by the bag or whatnot, I've lived in Florida, well, first time from 1956 up to 1969 or so. I've been to different states. And the landfill situation in a lot of them, they do have, like you have in your collection stations now, they have specific ones for different things, like for your cans, the different things of recycling, and they charge by the bag. The trouble with charge by the bag is, it's not a bad idea, but I think by weight is better because per bag, a person like me, two weeks it takes to get a bag of garbage, right? But if you go and you put fifty pounds in your bag of garbage, and I only have ten pounds in my bag of garbage, and they're charging two dollars and twenty-five cents a bag, it can get pretty expensive for the people that don't have the income, which being retired is not. I commend you for having looked into things, and I appreciate that. And everybody else that just says, "Oh, we're just not going to pile there, that might be too much hassle." That's how we end up being at the bottom of the heap in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. Oh, yes, ma'am. I see the rest of you. We'll just let this lady come, or come. I see you, ma'am, too, also.
Harriet Wells, 5283993rd Drive, O'Brien, Florida. About to give me the zip code. It all goes together. So as we all know, garbage is a problem for the world. So this isn't something that we're just having to deal with, of course. And our world is filling up with trash. And yet, it's very difficult to get people to recycle, for instance. Right now, I have five dwelling units, like I said a few minutes ago. Only one is occupied at all, and the others are not habitable, and we can't afford time or money to fix them. So right now, I'm paying six hundred and fifty dollars a year for, I take off about two bags of garbage a week, if that much, because we recycle everything we can. So that takes a lot out of the garbage. We used to take our recycling to the centers that we have, and they had places for recycling, and which they still do have some, and we would feed those little holes. And one day, my husband took it, and the person there said, "I don't know why people do this, because they just dump it all in the same place." We were horrified. Didn't even believe it. It took another, but horrified. A little bit later, we found out when, I think it was Live Oak High School was doing a project, it was true. All of the work that people were doing to rinse their stuff, take it, stick it in those holes, they were dumping it. And I suppose it's because since we pay more due to small volume, it gave them more volume, so we paid less. I don't know. But that was happening. So we quit recycling there. We haul our recycling, the plastic, glass, all everything, because we have them canned, to May, where they have a recycling center. That would eliminate a lot of trash. And then you've got the problem of getting people to do it. I don't know why. Even aluminum cans, people don't want to recycle, and you can get money for those. So currently, like I said, you pay six hundred and fifty dollars. So this would add an additional- So currently, like I said, we pay $650, so this would add an additional, if they go to the 300, $850 a year, making $1,500 a year, that I would be paying for taking about two bags of garbage to the dump a week, if that much. That, that seemed, you know, to make any sense at all. Um, the, just, I can't imagine that it would be cheaper to have curbside pickup, although I would love it, and it would be a great thing, but with all our road problems, and when it's raining, and all of the problems on the truck, and things that we talked with, the school buses have enough trouble getting in there, getting dump trucks in there, I just can't imagine that it wouldn't be more expensive. So, um, the main thing that I would appreciate is if you could look into, the person who said, talked about the government grants that are available, because I believe that the federal government should be helping these small counties, if anybody that, that needs it, to set up recycling centers, because that is one of the most things that this world needs to do, is deal with garbage and stop, uh, just throwing away plastic, just it's amazing, you know, we all heard about that issue. But if we could get some grants to help set up, and to have more recycling in our counties, um, I know that they take, at the dump, they'll take cardboard, office paper, steel, and aluminum. Glass is a huge problem and can be recycled, as can, you know, other, other, uh, things that you can recycle from there. So, I'm old, I forget what I wanted to say, but I really wanted to, um, just, I can't, I can't afford $1,500 a year for garbage pickup. And nobody's even living in any of the places but one. So the problem is to go in and try to get that straightened out, and how it is assessed in that manner, but also recycling and getting some grants to help us set up recycling, I think it would be a, a major benefit, and would, but what we've all got to pay for. And I thank you very much, I appreciate all that y'all are doing.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Say we'll vote her here.
Bobby Morgan, 7868, 213th Drive, Lihook, Florida. I feel for y'all. Y'all got a bad job. I wouldn't want it, I don't think even this room would want it. All I'm asking for is a little bit of understanding. My government check is $900 a month, with that, I raise four kids, all of them in school. My oldest is 18, senior this year. I teach them to be good human beings, I don't want them to be nasty. That's why we're here. Swan County, you don't have all the problems you do in the big city. You understand what I'm saying? This is the place I wanted to raise my babies, 'cause we're in a country, we don't have any problems, you're not gonna have any A crimes and all that other crap, you know, and your neighbors, if I grow corn, I give to everybody my neighbor. You know what I'm saying? My peach trees, when they produce, I pass them out. I'm not here to make a buck, and I'm not here to complain, I'm just asking, have a little bit of compassion, there's people out there like me. We've done everything we can, and we're struggling, and every little pinch that y'all take from us makes it worse. That's food out of my kids' mouth, you know? There's nothing I can do, like I say, I go in the rears every month, just paying for my young ones. That's the way it is. In the Marine Corps, they teach you to, teach you to adapt and overcome. I do that by going in the hole every month, just to feed my young ones, just to get them to shoot, just to get them to host them, that they wanna be in, have a school program, you know what I'm saying? And all of them are good human beings, I'm asking y'all to be good human beings. Remember, we're founded on God. Y'all are hurting people, and everybody's lost sight of that. They're complaining about bags of trash, and fire codes, and all that. If my house burns down, it's gonna burn down, if it gets a fire, it's it. Fire department show up, I'll be out in the downwater, oh, excuse my language, spraying, praying that something survives, 'cause I live too far out. Nobody's coming to rescue me, but I got to pay the assessment. I'm okay with that, y'all voted on that, I'll pay that. But that's money out of my, feeding my young ones. This garbage fee, that's gonna kill me. What am I gonna do? I can't reenlist, I can't even get a job. I don't know what to do. Y'all make it hard on the small people, and don't take us into consideration, your minds are already made up from when you came here. Ain't nothing gonna change that. I'm asking for a little bit of compassion, and rethink what y'all are doing, man, we voted y'all in for a reason. You're here to help us, and make us all grow better. We're one nation under God, man, it don't change. Can't lose sight of that. Don't hurt the little man, step on him, so that everybody else is good. I pray good with everybody. Please do that with us, just take that into consideration. I'm not gonna change your mind, I'm not stupid. Everybody had predetermined ideas when they sat down tonight. You already know what you're gonna do. Just lighten the load on us a little bit, please, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Debbie Seiner, 15183, 160th Street. And, um, the first gentleman that came up talked about, um, the wildflowers and unsecured loads, and I agree, um, we have, we moved here five years ago from Washington State, and we had curbside pick, uh, pickup, we were a very rural community, like five to 15 graduating class each year, 40 miles from a city with a grocery store. And we had curbside recycling and garbage, and it was per can. You asked if we would be interested in that, it depended on whether we had, whether we had to pay for weekly, or monthly, or if we had a choice, how often we wanted garbage picked up, 'cause we had a say, we paid for what we got. And we recycled everything we could, which was free, so if we recycled, it was free, and they brought the bag, left it at the curb, we filled them, they picked it up, they tagged it from which house it came from, if you put garbage in your bag, you got a warning, and then you lost the privilege. Um, that garbage was paid for, and that was incentive to recycle. And, um, they were both curbside, and, and, um, so Allied Waste, I think, we had Rebanko, and then it went to Allied Waste, and I've seen Allied Waste in Gainesville, so you might check into that company, see if they are a service that's available around here, I'm sorry. But it upsets me, I talked to Mr. White earlier, that the mowers protect the wildflowers, they mow around the wildflowers, but they mow over trash bags and styrofoam cups and just scatter it, so there's just garbage everywhere, to make it look worse. So, that's a problem I have. Um, anyway, this gentleman talked about, um, considering building a new landfill, and I don't know if you guys considered, if you do look into that, um, the county we came from had just put in a landfill, and they coordinated with the local power company, and they produced methane as a source of green energy, and that just went into production before I moved here. So that's maybe something you could work with the local power company, seeing if that's something that you can use the garbage to produce methane and make energy from it, and have it as an income, because they went into production making money selling the methane from their dump site. And that's a green energy, and they were being required in Washington to have so much of their power be green energy. I don't know if they're doing that down here, but anyway, that's something that, if you're gonna go that way, look, look to the future. And if you do decide to close some of the collection sites, maybe some of those could be used for recycling, because we could recycle appliances, they would dismantle, take the tin, the metal, and recycle the metal. Metal is worth something at times, you can, you know, that people would collect metal for income, you could collect tin and aluminum, we could turn it for money. Um, but a lot of stuff was, we didn't get money for, but at least it was less garbage to be hauled to the dump, it was being used in, to keeping the landfills from being filled up with just garbage. But plastic, any food containers of plastic, we could recycle, I'm sure there's more options down here than are being used in this county. So I would like to see more of that, and that would be less to haul to garbage.
Thank you.
And one other option for incomes is all these people that I follow trucks going down the road and see garbage fly out of the truck, 'cause they have unsecured loads, maybe when they pull into the dump sites, if they have an unsecured load, there could be a fine, or we could encourage law enforcement, you talk about looking at budget, have them be more vigilant. If people are hauling down icy bags of garbage on the side of the road, if people are losing garbage along the road, then maybe they should be fined, and those fines could go to help supplement the garbage collection system.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I'll try to make it quick, I, I can see that everybody's kinda tired. I just wanna say I don't normally come to commission meetings, but this was a pretty big increase, you know, when you're doubling somebody's fee, and it, it ain't like I can't, I can pay for it. I'm talking about, there's a lot of people can't pay for this. This is a high fee that we're imposing on a lot of people, I appreciate the options that y'all shown, and that you've looked at. I would encourage you to go back and, and look at this again, and I'll do the 300 tonight, but y'all gonna make your decision, I understand that, like the gentleman said back there, you'll make your decision, I wouldn't wanna have your jobs, I agree with you, Jared, but if I'm here, and I never come to these, everybody else that votes, they watching this, they gonna watch everything you do. Y'all know that, and I know you're in a tough spot, but you need to think about all these folks here, and their, what they, you know, their concerns, their livelihoods, and how it's affecting. And I wanna say thank you for what you're doing, I wouldn't want the job, and I didn't wanna say my piece, I do think you could come in with a, I didn't know you had a surplus of money, but if you got a surplus of money, is this a rush? That's one question I got, if you got a lot of money sitting out there, why you rushing it? I didn't like the letters, I'm gonna be honest with you there, and they said...
No, I didn't write them.
Well, y'all let them go out, y'all are the county, right? You let letters go out saying, it's gonna be 300, by the way, whenever we want to, we'll do 49305, I think is what he said. That does not sit well, and I can tell you, there's a lot of people, if they ever read that, I read, it made me angry. So that was kinda ridiculous, I'm being honest with you. But that's all I gotta say, I do appreciate what y'all are doing, good luck to you on your decision.
Thank you. Did I have anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Hi, my name is Kimberly Davis, 4915, 216th Street, and, um, I also wanna thank you for the job that you all are doing. I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments that, um, I thank you, Mr. Land, for the research you did, and I have to say that I can corroborate the information he gave, because while I have not been able to do as much as he's done, I also contacted New River, and when I spoke with them, they gave me the same information that they gave him. And I'm not saying that I know that that's the best solution, but one of the things I feel like we have heard from all the people here tonight, that I think we can understand, is the fact that there is a lack of trust, a lack of trust in the information that's been given, they're wanting to know what's accurate, what isn't accurate, a lack of trust in the preparation, that we understand you all carry the burden of this, you know, you all are, are our voice, but that's why we rely on you to be accurate, that's why we rely on you to double-check those letters, proofread these things, to double-check the facts. And so, moving forward, you know, with whatever decision that we all, that you all make, you know, what we really need you all to do moving forward, for the benefit of everybody, is to take your time and make sure that you have this information correct. You've gotten some great ideas and a lot of offers to help, you really do have a community that is behind you, whether you realize it or not, but we need to know that you are behind us, we need to know that you have our best interests at heart, and I promise you, we will be behind you. We just need to see that from you all as well. And so I thank you, and I hope you all continue the research, and we also would like a little more transparency with this research. You know, I really don't even wanna just hear, well, we've gotten this bid, we'd like for you to, or this quote, or whatever. You know, when you get these things in writing, have somebody put it online, we need to do our part in access, I don't expect you to print it out and take that cost, but we need to be able to access everything, we need to be able to see what you're doing, so that you can build that trust in us again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don Wainwright, 7163, 61st Drive. You know, it's amazing, decisions start at the top, work your way down. You know, what we gotta look at is, I fuel the truck up every day, Franklin does, other people do, it costs about $600 a truck, right? People's noticing their gas prices going up a little bit more, it's, when it gets voted in, it's $15 an hour. Somebody has to pay this piper down the road. If we don't like it, we need to get Biden out of there. We had fuel at $2 a gallon, everybody's making money. So when this starts going up, nobody can give a legitimate price on hauling y'all's garbage, because we don't know what fuel's gonna be, so you're gonna get hit with a fuel surcharge also. When we start taking, years ago, when we done away with our landfill, we started getting less, uh, leverage, right, less leverage. So now we've got where several conglomerates, people won't like what I say tonight, because a lot of people don't want a landfill in my backyard, but you up here griping about the prices now, when we've let these big companies manipulate to where we got nowhere to do it. Every type of Murphy's been tried, we've tried it, I've tried it, some of y'all have tried it, there is no efficient way to recycle to make money. The lady said washing machines, metal, she hadn't priced it lately, it's not even worth hauling to the scrapyard, right? I do this for a living, fellas, like sometimes we tear houses down, and the metal is not even worth hauling to the scrapyard, right? Guys like me are paying a garbage fee, but I've never dumped in one of these collection sites, I dump it at my restaurant, and I pay a bill for it, or I had it at my shop, and I'll pay a bill for it. So we, we got a lot of that, too. What I don't wanna see is every one of y'all sit up here and take care that you don't deserve, right? When these people drove their car here tonight, they didn't ride a horse and buggy, every one of them throw garbage away, and I'll probably be the most disliked person here tomorrow, but ain't none of them stood up here and complained about their gas that they paid this week in their car, doubling what it was eight months ago, right? The whole world is in a, in a turmoil with these prices going up, but until people stand up and say, y'all are not the reason that these prices is having to be raised, when these $15 an hour wages got voted in, who's paying it? Somebody's gotta step up and pay it, so y'all can argue, fight, bash it, but it don't change the fact that me and Franklin talked about what it cost to work a county employee the other day, and match their funds. This is something the public's not hearing, and y'all are not saying. Put it out there in the workshop where they see why Mr. Harris has to come and say, oh, those, these garbage trucks ain't running for free. Travis, these garbage trucks, you sell fuel every day, you see what these prices are becoming, but yet we wanna bash each other, instead of getting out there and saying, okay, we got a fuel problem. If we shut the garbage collection sites down two days a week... a week, how many of you own property that's gonna start having garbage on your property or in the road ditch? All right? That ain't a good solution. But y'all don't need to sit here and cowl down and, and take bashing that you don't deserve. All right? There is a fuel problem. There is a health problem. I can't even find a truck driver. I'm having to pay truck drivers $20 and $25 an hour and beg them to work. And I know the county has a shortage, just like I do. All right? Just like every other contractor. So what I'm saying, this is a problem that y'all inherited, and nobody has stood up and said, "Let's go back to Frank and Robbie and say, 'We want to raise our landfill. We've already got a liner. We've already got, uh, uh, monitoring wells. We have everything in place.'" And I assure you, the moment you start permitting, these landfills will call you with a different price tomorrow, because now you took their leverage away. But everybody has a problem not in my backyard. I don't want it in my backyard, but I still pay the garbage. So if you don't want it in your backyard and you took all your tools out of the tool chest, every tool that y'all have for leverage, what leverage do y'all have? Travis, what leverage do you have on waste management? Say, "Take my garbage at a cheaper price." You have none, because you took it away. Time after time, y'all voted for these people that it took your leverage away. All right? Start thinking of ways to gain your leverage back, to gain your backbone back, to where then we're not prisoners to another corporation who next month can say, "Well, fuel prices went up again, fellas. I'm fixing to raise your price again." All right? And so whoever gives you a trucking price gets that fuel surcharge, and the county's got to put it from somewhere. So garbage is the worst problem that every county has. So start having workshops, looking at leverage, reaching out to other landfills and saying, "What can we do?" Everybody has garbage, so let's start figuring out a way to do it. But when your health costs more, your fuel costs more, your Happy Meals for your children costs more, it costs you $10 to drive through a drive-thru right now, even if you can get a hamburger sent out the window. Fellas, we're living in a terrible tide for health. Don't bow down to this. Don't raise prices unless you absolutely have to. But make people understand while you're raising the prices that you don't have any choice. You're not the bad guy. Get in there and help us find some solutions, and, and then gain our leverage back to where we don't have to cowl down to every company to raise our prices. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing this time, I'll close public comment. We'll go for a floor discussion. We're gonna draw straws. He's gonna start talking. I did a lot of talking a while ago.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Pull your mic close, everybody can hear you.
I'm gonna get started hoping my colleagues will jump in here. We've heard a lot tonight. We knew we were gonna hear this. We've been, all five of us and staff have been working since we found out this rate back whenever in May, trying to come up with something. There's a lot of options we've been working on, a few new ones tonight brought to us. I just keep going back to that roadblock. I mean, I feel like we could come up with a solution. Obviously, we can't do that tonight, because we don't have all the details, but I would entertain any ideas you guys have at this point, because I, there's a lot of truth on both sides of everything that's been spoke tonight. I have an idea. I would really like to hear more from you guys, and then we can discuss it. But I do have a, I do. But I'd like to hear, because, folks, we don't get to talk about these things outside of these meetings. And, and, gosh, we have them almost every week, it seems like. And I guess we could probably have one every now and the week to try to work through some of this stuff, but sunshine law doesn't allow us to speak, so I never know what this guy's thinking or this guy's thinking until we get in here. So I'd love to hear from the rest of my guys here.
I mean, I've already said my thoughts. My thoughts is I don't want to raise it twice. And that's not popular on the board.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, that's what I want to make sure we don't, and hey, we can do whatever you guys want to do. We can take and spend all the money in the bank. We can pay for your garbage for a whole year. We can do that, but it don't solve the problem. That's the problem. I mean, it's costing a certain amount of money to get rid of this garbage. And you can, you can, you can put it off today, and we can fund it out of the general, I mean, general fund, or, you know, we can use Kerry's money, however you want to do it. But at the end of the day, it don't solve the problem, and it's gonna cost more money. And it just is. I mean, everything you touch is going up. I'm a business owner. I own a trucking company, and I own a nursery. And you can't find help. Your fuel's going up, your insurance is going up, your materials are going up. Everything you've got is going north, not south. And I just say, you gotta cover the cost.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've made my statement that we can let it stay, or, um, but I'm ready to move forward. Let it stay where it's at, where it's currently at, and, and we just move in, move in the right direction. We can't solve this issue tonight. We might not be able to solve it next year. We don't know what tomorrow holds. But I, I know the people out here looking for an answer. Might not be the right, might not be what we want to hear. But I appreciate Mr. Wayne Wright for, for what you said. Every, every price, prices are going up. I'm in the same situation, that I got property in the county, and I got property in the city. I have an 85-year-old mother, and I got aunts in their 80s. They're having to deal with the same issue that they've talked to me about. They were assured. I explained the best that I could. That don't change nothing. They live on fixed income. My mom's currently in a wheelchair. She get up and, but, carry me for nine months, I don't have a problem with helping her out. It's a tough situation that we in, very tough. But I sit here tonight and just listen, and I, I've enjoyed what, what has been said. Everything sounds good, but it don't make the matter stop. It go on and on and on. I want to say that, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna be quiet. I lost a relative in COVID. Services withheld in here Sunday. Talked with her husband this morning, and I told him, I said, "It doesn't end. It doesn't stop. It don't take the pain away. Some people gonna be happy. Some people gonna be upset. It still don't change that." What we have to do, I feel what is right, Mr. Chair, as I stated, and I'm, I'm ready to move forward. We, we gotta do something. It's getting late tonight. I'm willing to sit here and hash it out. I'm getting phone calls from my job, and I'm letting them know that I probably ain't gonna make it in tonight. This is my job, too. My job is to do what I'm supposed to do for the county. And that's to be a lesson to this county, that what I'm here for, whatever decision that we gonna make, I'm ready to make that decision.
Mr. Harris, can you tell me a close number of what the shortfall of the, our costs will be this year if, if we had, if we didn't have an increase? I'm not hogging you to the dollar figure, just-
Well, I can, what I can do is, I've got a copy of the totals here, so I can, I can give you an idea.
I'm sure I got it in front of me.
What the difference in the costs were from the current year to the next year. I'll say that.
Well, Commissioner Land, you ran these numbers. It was at $225, is that correct?
Yes, sir. With the, with the, with the information that I passed out, I ran the numbers at 225.
I know most of y'all don't have this, but you ran the numbers on it based on $225 a household. Well, that is, would the county add money to that? $225 will not cover the cost of the garbage. So when you ask us to do something, we're already doing it to the tune of a half a million dollars now, today, in this budget. And we're also wiping out any balance forward to carry forward for the next year, because you have to have three months of money to pay the bills till the tax revenue start coming in the following year. When, at $225, there's nothing left. So, I mean, it's, you pay now or you pay later? I understand. There's a hardship provision in here, and if you don't make enough money, there is a hardship provision that you can take and not pay it. It's based on the federal poverty level.
Oh, Commissioner White, I don't think that, I'd have to ask Keith or Nina, these here. I don't think I wiped out the balance forward completely. Think I, I think I left a little bit in there, but I'm going off of memory. I don't know that I zeroed it out. That's what I'm saying. It was, it was pretty close.
Well, you got, you got, you got a balance. You got the revenue at the top, correct?
Yeah, but I think there's a little extra there, too, in the way that they report it.
And I mean, that's fine. I'm just, I just want everybody to know.
Yeah. We're throwing a lot of skin in the game already.
Yeah, the county's throwing some skin in the game here. It's, it's not that we're charging you every dime, what it's costing to run this garbage. I understand that. I understand that. I understand that, too. I pay them, too. I'm a taxpayer, too. It doesn't matter what my bank account is, sir. I get that, but at the end of the day, there's a cost associated with the garbage. And I, I'm, I'm fine with, if we want to do $225, I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to put the facts out there to you, to let you know how it really is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
With that gentleman saying just that, that kind of brings me back to some of the ideas I had. So we know it's gotta go up. We know there's some options there, 225, 250, whatever it is. No one wants it to go up this year, but I mean, at some point now, we, we either gotta hit you all this year or all next year, because we'll have an answer by this time next year.
Or half and half.
Or half and half, yeah. Do we split that half and half now? Would that be doable for you, for our community, for our citizens? I mean, we know we're gonna have to make a change again. We know this, but just something to help.
Yes, sir.
Everybody says, "Well, we gotta do something right this second," but I've heard of your surplus and all this other. I've been listening. I'm not all the way, you know? And everybody's saying, "Well, we gotta do something right now." Mr. Land said he's been working, what, five days, six days on it? Maybe two weeks? And he's already got better solutions than everything else. Why can't you just table it? Just being honest, as, I think I'm half-assed more, excuse my language, but why wouldn't you just table it and spend the three months, or spend the three weeks, or whatever it is, talk to whoever you gotta talk to, and then call a new meeting and say, "Hey, this is what we got." He's a business owner. He'd do that. If Cisco was coming to his restaurant or whatever, whatever, he'd build it on somebody else. You know what I'm saying? If you try to find the best deal, you at least research it, and then put it to the public, not say, "Hey, no baseline, here we go." You know? Why not say, "Let's look at his plan. Let's look at your plan. Let's look at his plan. Let's look at everybody's plan, and figure out the best thing for everybody?" Not just say, "Okay, we're gonna pass $300 now. If it's not good, it's not good, whatever. If he finds a better deal in six months, we're screwed." What, what, what sense is that then? Just being honest. I moved to this county because it's a God-fearing county, and I thought everybody was decent, but I can't understand the mentality of, "Let's just throw money at it now and figure out the problem later." Why don't you figure out the problem, then throw the money at it?
Amen.
You know what I mean? I'm a dad. I have to. Shoes are food, baby. That's how it works in my house. If they need shoes, I don't eat. They eat, I don't. It works that way. If they need clothes, I can get my beds everywhere. That's how it has to be in my house. Why can't y'all just say, "Okay, well, here's the budget. Let's look at it. Let's figure it out before we charge everybody all this extra money"? Not only just old country folk, but hey, that's how I do it at my house. Why can't y'all do it for everybody else? I'm not trying to be a jerk, and I'm not saying y'all's job's easy, but just please, please, think it out. If you sign that paper today, and y'all pass it, which I'm sure you will anyway, but if you pass it, that's true for me and everybody else, and then we're in for, oh, well, if you don't get the deal, and nobody, if everybody tables his stuff, it goes with his stuff, then we're paying more. He's already said it's going up every year from here on out. He gave us a better solution. That's it. If he could do it in two weeks, three weeks, y'all can definitely do it in a month, two months. Come up with a better solution. That's all I'm asking.
And that's what I'm stating. I mean, he, just going off his numbers.
I know, but I'm just saying, he already cut it down from 57 to something, to 20 something, 30 something, per ton. And he came up with a solution, haul it yourself. That's the best thing I could ever think of. I wouldn't pay waste management. Pick up my shoes, nothing. I don't know about this curbside stuff. I live in the country. Y'all got to come down a lot of dirt roads to get in my house. I'd much rather haul it myself. I don't have a problem hauling. I don't have that much strength. The canisters go in that little camp, then. I don't know what y'all do with them, but that's where they go. You know what I mean? It's only over three days a week, anyway. Well, I can only go a couple days a week, but you know what I'm saying. I'm just asking, if y'all got it, figured out what Keith got it figured out, save us some money. I know we're gonna pay in the long run, but damn, it's been a hard couple years lately. I'm struggling. My bank accounts minus right now. So I know I'm gonna lose my pocket, because I ain't gonna pay. I ain't gonna sit here and tell you I'm gonna pay. You can put it on a payment plan. He says hardship. I've tried that. They ain't offered me nothing.
Did you go ask for it?
Yo!
Are you a disabled veteran?
That doesn't mean nothing. I'm 100% disabled.
That don't mean nothing. If you go to the end, if you get a social security, get a government check, and show them the letter. You know what you get fishing, a lot of them?
Yep.
I appreciate it. You think I go fishing every weekend? Can't do it. Can't get up down to the sea. But that's all I'm asking. You don't get no hardship. That's why when he said you get a hardship, there ain't no hardship. I'm a hardship. My hardship is I don't have my medication. I don't get shoes for my kids or food in their mouth. So please have a little bit of understanding. Just one human being's enough.
Just give us your name and address, please.
Robert Hancock, 21511, 180th Street. Um, my mother-in-law's sitting there, and she's also scared. We just took my father-in-law to rent across the hood. That was the income. So when you say your account, oh, yeah, our account may look similar, it may not. Hers doesn't. She has no more income. But what you're saying right now is if this doesn't get paid, the 10 acres that they slay together, and the house that they slay together, you gonna take it from them, because she can't pay it. I'm sorry. I fought for this country. That ain't what I fought for. I'm sorry. I fought for this country. That ain't what I fought for. Last time I checked, this is America. It's free. We fight for what we want. We get whatever we fight for, and we don't turn our backs on each other. Now, I don't care how rich you are. I don't care how poor you are. I don't care the color of your skin. I don't care nothing. If you're willing to put in the work, great. We were given options. So, before a decision made, see the options. See what's there. Then, okay, nothing else happens, the options fall through. Put the meeting out there and say, hey, we tried this, 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 and this is the best we got. Okay? We saved you five dollars. It's two ninety-five instead of three hundred. I guarantee everybody out here is gonna look at you and say, at least you get, put the effort in. You know, I'm listening to Mr. Land over here going, I found this. I found this. Okay, that, that's great. Then let's look at those options. You know, y'all are smart men. Y'all put in this position for a reason. Everybody here voted. Y'all got the position. But look at your constituents out here and say, okay, I'm gonna give everything I've got to keep this down as low as I can. Because, let's face it, we in a bad place. Now, the world is in a bad place right now. So, help each other out. Figure out the options, and then make the decision. Now, you've already said, yeah, there's a surplus. Do we wanna go and run all the way through that? No. He followed common sense and fine, that says that. But if we can go until we can at least explore the options, then that's, that's the way we go. I mean, it's common sense.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I am willing to listen, and I'm glad that we're having this diet office and this con, these conversations. You are the ones, you are the ones that put us in, us in office. And, it's, it's, it's back to the people. But at the end of the day, we have to make the decisions. Gentlemen, uh, how much time, what, how much time do we have?
That's, that's what I was gonna ask the chairman. Mr. Rackley, can you tell us what the deadline is?
What's the deadline?
On the adoption?
September fifteenth, so.
September what?
Fifteenth is, is the very last day, but you really need a little bit of time before that to get to the rolling on, so. You maybe have a week, a, at the most, if you wanted to continue this meeting and revisit this next week. I don't know that you're gonna have the answers before then. Um, so that's kinda what we're up against now. You, you do have next year. I mean, if you wanna not make the decision now.
Next year?
And revisit this next year for next year's tax bill. There's, of course, budget implications to that, and costs and contracts that you have to pay, and you have to dispose of the waste somehow, so, you know, you have to figure out how to pay for that in the end.
Are there any complications if we do not, just wait to make it?
I'll let Mr. Harris or staff answer that in terms of your budget, but, uh, I think you'll have to find some funding somewhere.
Are you saying if you do not adopt a resolution?
He, he's asking if we leave it alone, what's the budget impact? We leave it alone until next year, how, what's the?
But we stay at one thirty.
Oh, well, if you stay at one thirty?
We'd have to run numbers on that. I, I can tell you what the difference is right now, though, between the current year and the proposed budget, the way that, it was in the budget book, not the one that Mr. Land put together. It's, uh, the difference is two million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That's the difference. Now, I had shared in the last meeting that we could postpone. We were having the conversation about building a landfill, but I said we could postpone the modifications on the collection sites, and that comes to nine hundred and eleven thousand, four fifty-four. The self-hauling, I've got three hundred thousand down here. It may be two hundred and fifty thousand. It just depends when we get the bids on the walking floor trailers, if we go with walking floor trailers. Um, so that number, I, I'm gonna speculate it's between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars on that. So, that totals a million two eleven four fifty-four. If you subtract that from the two point eight million, you're still short a million six hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars.
That's including a half a million we already putting in?
Yeah, because that, that money's already in here. It was already calculated into revenue. That's taking out the modifications of the collection sites. That money was already built in the budget, but what I'm saying is if we use that to, and not do it, postpone that, it's essentially taking that money out as an expense, so it reduces it down. If you do that, do the self-hauling, you're still short about a million six twenty-six.
Ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
Two twenty-five's where I'm at. I don't know, I mean, I, I, obviously, everybody's not gonna like it. Some are gonna love it, some are gonna hate it. But, two twenty-five, I mean, I studied, I didn't just pull that number out. I've kinda looked at it a couple different ways, and two twenty-five, that's why I went. I ran it here. Two twenty-five total.
Yeah, go from, from one thirty to two twenty-five as well.
Ninety-five dollar increase. That's a, that's a, that's a. We, I think we all understand that, and have been spending a lot of time trying to find a better alternative.
Let me, let this gentleman speak real quick.
It's James Winston, two one three, two, uh, one twenty-six place. There's a lot of money that has been overcharged in taxes, like myself. Over the last fifteen years, I have found out that I was overcharged almost four thousand dollars in property taxes between fire and garbage taxes. And I'm only allowed to get six hundred and something dollars back. So, you take mine and numerous other people, there's a slush fund of probably two, three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars out there, if, if not, a million. So, wherever all that money is, y'all need to find that and be able to, to draw from it, cause that's in the county.
Thank you.
So, y'all need to locate that money and, and be able to use it, cause y'all haven't given it back to us.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And, and, and if it wasn't for the way these people wrote that letter, myself and all these other people that bombarded the county, wouldn't have found out about it.
Mr. White, you have a further comment?
No, sir. I, I mean, you need a motion. I'll make you a motion, but I don't know if y'all are gonna like it.
Before you, if you don't mind, I wanna ask the chairman something. I know you can't make a motion. You said this earlier. But you also, I'm kinda putting you on the spot here. You said you didn't want us to raise it twice. I'm just kinda trying to figure out, I've heard from all the other guys. Are, were you insinuating leaving it alone until we found out what was going on?
Well, that's why I was trying to ask you gentlemen, cause I didn't have the number in front of me, what the actual number was. If it doesn't get raised at all, what the number is that covers it.
For twelve months.
That's one point six million dollars.
One point six million dollars.
That's what you came up with.
If, if you take out the modifications of the sites and you do the self-hauling, it shrinks that difference down to one point six million that you would have to have over and above the current year's budget.
That's saying credit him back to the site improvement that you was talking about?
That's right.
So, really it's two point, two and a half million probably.
It was two eight. Two million eight thirty-seven, eight seventy-eight.
But it's one, hard numbers, it's one six. One point six, you're saying?
If you don't, if you don't change it at all.
If you don't do anything at all, that's, that's my question.
Right.
But we talked about not kicking the can down the road.
We did. I hear you.
And that's where a lot of the reason why we're, where we're at right now.
Why are we buying property and cattle sites? Why are we doing all this, putting money into certain businesses instead of taking care of the people that live here at birth? Why are we spending all this extra money that our people are not being taken care of? Where is this money coming from to buy a property and cattle site that the state of Florida will help and grant? And if you guys would please table this and take advantage of that nice lady over there, I guarantee you she'd afford me any money. Save a lot of money, and I won't charge her a dime.
My question is, are you already getting grants?
Ma'am, I'm not brushing it off. I understand that you're upset and frustrated, but I'm not brushing it off. I've been the one up here that's been talking about leaving it like it is until next year. So, I, I mean, I understand, but I'm fighting too. I'm, and I'm not fighting for three hundred dollars. I just wanna be clear, and I wanna be respectful to everybody, but I mean, trust me, I've been sitting here for about five hours, and I've had two hundred and something people, and I'm the one that deals with everybody's anger. I'm, I'm, they're right here at the microphone, and trust me, I wanna do the best I can by everybody. But, I mean, attack, attack, attack does not solve the problem at the end of the day. Yes, ma'am. I understand. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pravat, do you mind, I, I don't know that we've said it yet, would you mind telling the public our statutory obligations with the deadlines? We got till September the fifteenth?
Yes, sir. Next week.
That's, that's all the time we got. Ma'am, I understand fixed income, and I understand if you wanna argue the fact, but let me, let me, let me explain my side to you right now. I'll tell you some facts. And I'm gonna tell you respectfully, because I have respect for everybody in this room. Everybody's a taxpayer. Everybody in here runs this county. I don't run it. I have one vote up here on this four to five, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give you a little breakdown of how serious this is to me and how close it is to home. I have a mother at seventy years old. I have, I'm fortunate. I have two grandmothers. One's ninety-two, and one just turned ninety-three yesterday. All three of them on their, own, their own small house and on a fixed income. So, trust me, when I'm trying to do the best I can and saying that I'm not looking out for the small people in this county, when I gotta make a decision about two grandmothers that could die at any day, I mean, it, there's more to the picture here than what you're kinda giving us credit for, is what I'm saying. I, I completely understand, and I'm, and I'm not happy with the way this, with the way the letters, we've made it, we've made that clear. That's why I say, I would like to see it stay like it is, let us get through it, find a decision, come back, and there's one decision, there, there's one amount. It's gonna cost the county some money, but I'm, there again, I'm one vote. I'm one vote. And I can tell you this right now, I, I, I can tell you right now, without a doubt, if we vote on it right now, somebody makes a motion and somebody seconds it, and there's four people that vote for it, it's gonna be four to one with me descending. That's, but at the end of the day, that doesn't help anybody in Suwannee County. You see what I'm saying? Because that vote passed. All it takes is three. So, you know, I, I mean, it's, it's a no-win situation, and trust me, I appreciate your passion, and I appreciate you fighting for the people. But, I mean, after a while, I have to stand up for myself too. Yes, ma'am. I appreciate it. I do. Thank you.
What about the possibility of rate, we all agree twenty dollars for fire was not bad. That wouldn't be much, but it would bring it to a hundred and fifty instead of three hundred each half, and then next year, then have to come back and do something else. But that's just a suggestion for a lower amount for right now, but this year is so bad, but it would still give twenty dollars to a household or more, so I'm just picking that number.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Gentlemen, I'm, I'm open to, I mean, a safer conversation and continue, and I, trust me, I, I truly wanna apologize if I get as many times before, I get passionate when, I mean, at the end of the day, we are representatives of the county. It does fall on our shoulders, and I take responsibility for my part of it. I do. Do I like the way this just went down? I absolutely do not. But at the end of the day, myself and each one in the community has to figure out how we solve the problem. And I wanna do the right, I wanna do right by everyone, but the problem is, that never happens. There's some that's gonna be upset, so I.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Plon.
I'm, I'm saying that I'm, I'm stuck in that mode that, let's move forward. Let's just kick this can tonight, and let's move forward, and let's, let's stay like it is.
I don't, I don't wanna come back in a, here's, here's a situation. We got five, seven days, or whatever it is. I don't, I don't wanna come back for another fight in five or seven days. I wanna leave here tonight, and whatever that decision is, myself and everyone, everyone in the community has a little bit of closure to what we have to deal with moving forward. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
At, at two twenty-five, that's a ninety-five dollar increase. Ninety-five plus the twenty on fire is a hundred and fifteen dollars. A hundred and fifteen dollars divided by twelve, that's nine dollars and fifty-eight cents a month, for total in increases. For increases that haven't occurred in eight years. I mean, I, y'all can, I mean, if y'all wanna kick the can and do a hundred and thirty again, I mean, that's fine, but we're gonna, the county's gonna cough up one point six million dollars to, to cover the difference and of a recurring expense. We're gonna put a Band-Aid on some at the tune of one point six million dollars. It's gonna come right back up next year, and that one point six is gone. Now, I don't know that that's doing the public a good justice myself either. Um, I think that's just kicking the can and spending, spending budget money that we have to kick the can one year down the road at a tune of one point six million dollars. That is, that, that is, I would not do that with my money, no matter if I had ten cent or ten dollars to my name. I would make a motion, I'm making a motion now, that we do it for two twenty-five. We go to two twenty-five on garbage this year, and that we, and this isn't really a motion, this is discussion at this point, but my motion is that we go to two twenty-five. However, with that said, Mr. Pravat, discussion, I would like for us to pursue this other landfill, pursue hauling it ourselves, and save as much money as we possibly can, and answer all these questions that we've had here tonight. Curbside, our own landfill, recycle. Grants, I mean, nine dollars and fifty-eight cents a month, nine dollars and fifty-eight cents a month, and it saves us one point six million dollars kicking the can. That's, I'm making a motion, we go to two twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Land. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor, say aye.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor say aye. I have three in favor, all.
Before you make, I, I just want to say this.
All opposed.
I really do, sir, can I comment?
Yes sir.
So you, you said 225, listening to the gentleman here and the others, I just say, because I told you I had a number when I started. I had 200 to 210 dollars. So I, and that was a small increase. I just honestly think guys, it's going, I don't even know if we can do it for that, but that's going to be close. At least it doesn't.
It costs us 1.6 million dollars to kick the can down the road another 12 months and we're going to be back here next year having the same discussion, but it costs us.
I got you. You should have been working on this since May. We didn't know about it until that nasty hurricane hit us in August. And if you all have been doing it research that you're now doing, thank God, thank you for that, we appreciate it. We wouldn't have been here, you would have already had this information. You already have the figures that you still don't have. You've got people here who are willing to bring their trucks, people who have offered to do everything. There is no reason for us to be still here, even if you kick the can out now, it's because you're willing to get those answers. And I will say something else, we voted to win it. That can be changed. And I'm glad and grateful, so are they. And I wasn't polite last time I spoke, but you really, really, especially those people who are not even paying attention. I gave you sheets, I told you last time, look for the grants, you may not get them now. What the grant you missed because you didn't start in May, close August 1st for exactly which you're looking for startup money. And the other grant that you need starts October 1st and ends December 31st and we can get it. That will help with all these costs that you're talking about. So yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to quit talking, I'm going to leave here because you've got me in a rut.
Thank you. Commissioner, I have a motion by Commissioner Land at 225, I have a second by Commissioner White. All in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm going to have to go with aye.
I have it. All in favor say aye, I got three. All opposed, say aye. The motion carries, 3-2.
We still got work to do.
Yeah.
We still got work to do gentlemen.
Yes ma'am, thank you. I'm going to take a five minute recess, Mr. Harris. I'm going to take the five minute recess, go to the restroom, we'll finish up. Close the public hearing on the solid waste and we will move to item number 14 at this time. At 5:05 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to discuss with possible board action adoption of resolution establishing revised transfer fees and charges for disposal at the county transfer station. Repelling and superseding prior conflicting resolution providing for severability and providing an effective date. Uh, at this time, we will open a public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard on this matter, if you, the county attorney will swear you in at this time.
Okay, anybody? Correspondents, stand up, okay. Do y'all swear affirm that this money you give before the board decision would be the truth to help you back? Thank you very much. Remember to state your name and address.
At this time, we'll go for a staff presentation, Mr. Harris and Mr. Pravat.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, I think you've pretty much introduced it. The proposed new, what we call a tipping fee rate typically, it's actually a transfer fee rate in this case and the proposed rate is $65 per ton.
I have any questions or comments from Mr. Harris? Or Mr. Pravat? See, none, do I have a motion?
Do these people?
Get open the. Oh, I'm sorry, I got to have them. It's been a long night. I'll have to just bear with me, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I will open the floor to public comment. Do I have anyone wishing to speak on this matter? See, none, I will close public comment. This time, board discussion, do I have any questions from the board? See, none, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Please move.
I have a motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries 5-0. At this time, I'll close the public hearing on this matter. We didn't have any additional agenda, Ms. Mandy, thank you. Jim.
We got number fifteen.
You do?
Yeah, it's number fifteen.
Number fifteen.
Number fifteen, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was moving to now.
Okay, I got you here.
Commissioner Fleming, you got to keep me straight here. At this time, item number 15, discussable possible board action agreement with Swanee County Development Authority Board for purchase of property at Catalyst Site. Mr. Harris and Mr. Pravat.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm, Mr. Pravat's going to cover these numbers with you, but a few years ago, the development authority stepped up and thi- this is actually, the subject property is a piece of property that the county had actually considered years ago when we started the Catalyst Site. At that time, the bank that owned that property had a really big number on it that they thought it was worth and um, we disagreed with them and walked away from it at that time. So much later, uh, they decided that they wanted to stop holding it in their portfolio and came up with a much better price for the property. And the development authority purchased it and the county has an option to purchase it. And it was for three years and we've paid them, I think it's $10,000 a year for each year for that option that we've had on it. And Mr. Pravat can go over the numbers with you on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Chairman, board members, the original contract price that the development of purchase, development authority purchased it for was 183,946.50. That's $3,075 an acre. Um, when they were looking at the property, the way you add things up, it looks like it's $64,000, but when it adds up, it's 64 acres. But when you actually have it surveyed out, it came out to be 59.82 acres. Our agreement with the development authority said that we would, everything that they spent on it, which would be the purchase price plus the closing costs, which were only $143.81 plus $31.50, we would, that would be the purchase price. So that's 184,121.81. Then, because we've paid the option price over each of the years, each option year, the 10,000 that we paid, we get 50% credit for that over the period of time. So, uh, that gives us a credit of about $15,000, half of it. So the actual purchase, total purchase price would be 169,121.81 altogether.
I have any comments for staff?
Plus, you know, plus the typical, you know, closing costs in the end, but our per, the total purchase price of lot free to approve then would be the 184,121.81 and then working through the contract, you take out all the other stuff.
Mr. Land, you have a question?
Just a couple of quick ones because I'm tired. Where we, where did y'all, where did you fund this from?
It's, it, it's hard to see on the little diagram there, but there's the road fries.
No, where did we fund it from out of the budget?
Well, I, I don't have any idea about that now.
Mr. Harris.
We're working to make a decision on where you want to fund it if you purchase it. I mean, you've got the money that we took as reimbursement for public safety personnel last year that's in reserve.
What's our intended use for it? I'm just curious, and what percentage of it's wet?
I don't know that there's a wet percentage out there. That haul perks pretty good in that particular area. It does, you can see that it drops down away from 50th, South 50th, but it's covered with trees. The purpose at the time that we had the initial conversation and the purpose of the whole Catalyst Site was to have a, an industrial park that was available to large users. And obviously the anchor was, uh, Krossner at the time, Benderholtz now. But the other issue was that of having availability to the rail and the rails were out there. So Matco is out there, Benderholtz is out there. The property adjacent to this is really the only property that we have left that's a part of the Catalyst Site. Uh, the two pieces on either side of 175th that we're paving now. So it would be for development of large users that need to be an industrial park. I, I don't think that purpose has changed over the years.
Mr. Chair, does it have any marketable timber on it or is it just scrub?
I don't, I, I think it's mostly scrub. We had a, we had two pieces that had planted pines on them at the time, uh, before we removed them in order to mine out some of the dirt to finish up what we had too on the Krossner Site. And those are the pieces on either side of 175th out there that are cleared today. They had some timber, small timber.
Oh, just to kind of follow up with, of course, Commissioner Hill. Mr. Pravat, obviously with the development authority, we've kind of been, you know, aware of this piece the whole time. And just so you know, just like the new literature that we handed out, the brochure that with the rendering of the Catalyst Site, all of that property is reflected in all of those renderings. Uh, we've been marketing this property as county property because that was always kind of the intent was for the county to, the, the development authority was trying to do us a favor. So the property is very important to the success of the park out there. And, uh, but just so you know, it is, it is up on the site, it is in all our printed material. So, um, it is, it is a vital piece of the, of the park out there. And if we didn't have that piece, like Mr. Harris said, you got a road going there, well, most of the property to the west of 175th is this property. It's not really county property, so. And I think most of it is usable. I mean, it's weird soil out there.
I was just curious, any other questions from Mr. Norris? Any other questions for staff? See, none, do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion, we approve the purchase.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Land, second. Commissioner White, I'm sorry, we just talked for a part, sorry. Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner White, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So that's how you do it, you put it on the end and wear us down until we can't think no more and then, then you put it at us now.
At this time, I will, uh, open the floor to public comment. Please, I got anybody that'd like to speak, please.
Have you heard enough?
I had her for you tonight. Chief.
Chairman, board members, I just, after such a long evening, want to give you a little bit of good news. Looks like COVID numbers are slowly, slowly starting to wrinkle down. Um, we're still, you know, having to respond to many calls and we still have, you know, community members that are, um, you know, are fighting this daily. Um, I'm sure you guys probably saw, saw the news, but, uh, Chief Randy Byrne, Lake City Fire Chief, uh, passed from COVID. They've got another, another member, a lieutenant over there that's, that's, uh, fighting hard, but it's not looking good for him either. Uh, his funeral will be on Friday. Um, our honor guard been over there since yesterday and is helping those guys immensely, get everything planned and, and ready to go for, for Friday. But at least we are seeing a little bit of a, of a tweak down at the hospitals. We're back to being able to transport locally into Lake City with, with most of our patients, if they're critical, we still have to bypass and go, go to further hospitals. But they're at least able to take the majority of our patients now, so.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
He said good news.
I just wanted to, I was going to say this, but they already went and put a sign out where the WAC Pro location was and John Deere place was. The company we've kind of been teasing y'all with, Tidewater, is coming to town. And, uh, they put a sign out, they're looking for help. So if anybody's looking for a job, they need employees, okay? They hope to open up in October if they can get equipment, uh, and parts, but they will be carrying three different lines of equipment. Uh, heavy duty, uh, construction equipment case, they will be carrying Tiger Cat, which is timber logging equipment and then Case HI, uh, big tractor, huge farming operation. So a lot of our farmers are excited about that, but, uh, since they put the sign out, I'm going to go ahead and let you guys know, they are coming. So if you know anybody looking for a job, send them to me, I can get you a number.
I got first dibs on that. You take their sign down, I'm, I got first dibs on the help.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. At this time, seeing no other public comment, I'll close public comments. We'll go to closing comments, uh, Mr. Pravat.
No sir, nothing further this evening, thank you.
Mr. Harris.
Not this evening, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner White.
Uh, not a lot, just, uh, I think we did what we had to do tonight and, uh, it's, it's still kicking the can a little bit, but not near as bad and, and I don't know, they elected me to look at, at what was, what was best and looking at the numbers that we had. I just feel like that's, that's as good as we could do it and, uh, I think we, we did the right thing.
Commissioner Fleming.
Yeah, behind every dark cloud is sunshine. I, I would like to say to the board tonight, y'all well done. Even though I didn't vote again, I don't have no bearing. I'm thankful and grateful, that's, that's what we have to do, and men, and men of this county. That we come together and we work together whether we disagree. We have to disagree too, agree, but, uh, I'm, again, I'm thankful and grateful and the good news was that Chief saying that the, the COVID is, uh, going down. I tell you, I, I hear a lot, hear a lot of people, uh, know a lot of people personally that, that, uh, it was a couple of funerals. it was a couple funerals, a couple, a couple of two, two or three funerals that's been held right here in this Coliseum because of social distancing and because of the, the overcrowd, the churches are not holding them. And I've came and I attended, I sit up, sit up in the bleachers and just observe the people that's going through the hurt, hurting pain. There was a couple gentlemen that, a dad and a son. Uh, he passed away, he was a hundred and one, he, he was in my district, actually a family member in here, hundred and one years old, Mr. Ansley. And his son, he's, uh, in Tallahassee, they, they, I think they pulled the plug on him today. His wife is affected with COVID. So, we, we, I'm, I'm just hoping and praying that this, this thing will die down because it's, it's so tragic that we're facing the unknown that we don't have no control over. And I know according to medical science, they're doing whatever they can to alleviate, uh, a lot of it. But there's still a lot of unknowns and it's, it just worried me when, when you got, like, like I said, I got my mom and aunties and, uh, family members, I got siblings, I got a wife and I got children, I got grandchildren. It's, uh, and they say you're in the hospital, it's kind of hard to come out of there because it's scary. And, and, uh, I've been there and had it and I know what it was like. But, but, uh, I'm thankful and grateful that we're here tonight. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad that, that this meeting was, I, I look at it, look at it as a success. And, 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 uh, Commissioner Land, thank you for doing your homework, which I did not do, I have to be honest. I did ask some questions, but you were in there and I appreciate you for that. You will be my commissioner, so I want you to continue working hard.
This one here might have sucked the life out of me for a little while anyway.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land?
Um, I just reiterate what Commissioner Fleming and Commissioner White said, um, you know, we, we, uh, we kicked the can down the road a little bit, but I think that the people deserved a little bit of relief in us not trying to kick it out of the park in one lick. Um, I did spend a lot of time on this, you know, just, I just kept coming back to the, you know, the, the single mom with four kids or the, the eight-year-old retiree that's been here her whole life and on eight hundred dollar, nine hundred dollar fixed income and, and, you know, uh, doing what best we could to, to get as far as we could in, in one year, and I do think that we, you know, tonight was a, was a success. I mean, we got it at a nine dollar and fifty-eight cent a month increase. Um, that hadn't been done in eight years, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's too bad. Um, you know, was it fun? Absolutely not. Did I enjoy it? No. But I think we made some progress. That's all I got.
Commissioner Hill?
Just echo what everyone's already said, I just, I really do appreciate the folks coming out tonight, I know some of them were a little hostile, but, but they, in the end, got their message across. Um, I'm hoping we can work within that, maybe not, that is as far as the can kicks, I don't know, we'll just have to use all our resources, come up with what we can. I do appreciate all the rest of the board members and their discussion tonight, it, it was hard, it's still hard, and, and I'm gonna lay awake tonight worrying about this, just like every one of you guys are. You know, there's, there's no right way, there's no wrong way that fits everything, so I, I just commend you guys, I appreciate every one of you for speaking your part, speaking your piece and, you know, I just, I'm glad that we came up with something, I am glad because, you know, I, I, we talked about kicking that can down the road and the last year or two, it had been brought to our board and, and we didn't do anything, I, I was part of, a little part of that can kicking and I think tonight was just, we had to address it. I understand both your guys' stance on it, you guys know I love y'all, no hard feelings at all, we all understand it, and that's all I got to say, and in lots of, I'll say, appreciate some of the good ideas too tonight, that's part of having these meetings, I mean, there was a lot of folks who were some good ideas tonight, and I can really appreciate that, so, that's all I'll say, thank you.
I, I just appreciate, number one, I appreciate staff, I appreciate all the effort from Greg Scott, Parks and Rev, for getting us in two locations set up to go to work and, and try to do the work of the people. Uh, I'm disappointed that I don't have, as a commissioner, I don't have a better answer, I'm disappointed in that, I don't know what that answer is. Uh, sometimes you just don't win them all, and I mean, this was just one of them, to where do I know that the price needs to go up, I do. But I just don't want to have to keep coming back to the people, I mean, that's, that's the thing, I, I don't mean any disrespect to the commissioners, I understand the numbers and obviously, they don't lie and there needs to be increase, I just wanted to do it at one, you know, try to figure out that one number and I understand it. It would have caused a one point six million dollar expense, uh, but we'll move forward and, uh, I just try to get some better answers. Uh, I hate arguing with folks, I hate people being upset with us thinking that we don't care about the county because that's the furthest thing from reality. When you sign up for this job, you take a, a load on your back that people will never understand, and that's fine, I signed up for it, I chose to want to make a difference, as with you four. And it's a burden that people just don't realize, but we're gonna keep fighting a good fight and, and, uh, continue to make a difference every day. Every day won't be easy, I understand that. Uh, I will say this, my thoughts and prayers go out to Brad Bird and his family, I just got a message that he's a classmate hours, he passed away. It, I got a message through about thirty minutes ago, just my heart breaks. Uh, just continues, the hits just keep coming and it's just, uh, heartbreaking, but my thoughts and this board's talk go out to his family and just every day. Tomorrow evening, we have a, there's a service for Chris Brantley. Uh, Daniels, there again, another person the same age as us, uh, or younger, I mean, younger than us, uh, four years or so. I just, uh, sometimes I'm just left with no words and the night's one of them, and usually I'm not speechless, but I am tonight. If I just have a motion to adjourn.
Swim move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hill?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor say aye.
Aye.